Call to order.
I'm sorry, one moment, Mayor. We just started the webinar. We're good to go.
Good. Good evening. At this time, we'd like to call to order the City Council meeting of the City of Palo Alto from Monday, September 19th, 2022. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Burt.
Here.
Councilmember Cormac.
Here.
Councilmember DuBois.
Here.
Councilmember Filsa.
Here.
Vice Mayor Koo.
Here.
Councilmember Strong.
Here.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Okay.
Absent.
Thank you. And before proceeding to our first item, I just want to announce that the city staff is pulling consent calendar, item number three pertaining to natural gas purchases, and that will be rescheduled for a date uncertain. So our first two items are closed session items. First is a conference with the city attorney regarding existing litigation of Charles Shrivner versus the City of Palo Alto, and the second is a conference with the city attorney regarding existing litigation regarding Eric Figueroa et al. and versus the City of Palo Alto. And do we have any members of the public who wish to speak on either of these items?
Yes, we do. One moment.
Okay. Okay, it appears we have one speaker, Aram James. Welcome.
How you doing? I don't see the clock up, but there you go. So, you know, I'm talking about the Black Lives Matter lawsuit by Officer Figueroa and the other members of the Palo Alto PD that I feel so bad for them, those little fragile members of the criminal justice system as a public defender for a year, 20, 25 years, one year in Compton, one branch of the Public Defender's Office in Santa Clara County. We got threatened by our clients. We got threatened by cops. I mean, it's a hard scramble business, the criminal justice system. I had a DA after a long trial tell me that the police officer didn't like my style across examination, said I was over the top as a public defender, and he rather shoot me than speak to me. Do you think I went ahead and sued him? It's not a business for fragile people. Oh my God, I feel so bad for these fragile officers. You know, if they're that fragile, they shouldn't be in the business. A Black Lives Matter mural beautifully done. You all supported it as you should have, and now these folks want to squeeze some money out of you. Say it loud. It's a frivolous lawsuit? I don't know. What do you think? Use your own independent judgment. This lawsuit went national, made a mockery of the City of Palo Alto. At the same time, we had no black police officers and certainly no black officers in the command staff, and we still have Zack Perone on the department. These characters, and by the way, I don't know whether they're proud boys or proud girls, I have no idea, but there's one woman in there as well that's suing. Are you kidding me? Let a jury hear this, this lawsuit. Don't you pay these people a dime, not a penny. They're being paid hundreds of thousands of dollars and huge benefits every year, and this is the way they want to respond to the city? Oh, please. This is a political stunt in my estimation. You may see it some other way. That's up to you. Let a jury decide. This, this is a, look, you get a Zack, get rid of Zack Perone, you start hiring some black police officers, you start hiring and doing some vetting to make sure we don't have such fragile little officers in our department that anytime something doesn't quite go their way, they're going to sue the city over a beautiful piece of artwork? What are you guys going to say? You going to go back there and let them squeeze you? Boy, what a precedent that would set, wouldn't it? Six officers sue over the City of Palo Alto with a long, long history of vile racism and policing, discriminatory policing, and now you're going to pay them? You're going to pay them? Oh, please spare us all the shame of doing that. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our public comments, and we'll now take a motion to go into closed session. Councilmember Cormac.
Oh, sorry, move that we go into closed session. Second.
Okay. And would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Strong. Vice Mayor Koo.
Yes.
Councilmember Filsa.
Yes.
Councilmember DuBois.
Yes.
Councilmember Cormac.
Yes.
Mayor Burt.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And so for members of the public, for the scheduling, we expect to be back by 6:30 or so, maybe a little bit earlier, and we'll see you then.
Before going to the consent calendar, I just, we do have an agenda change. I just, item number three is being pulled by staff for to be rescheduled for a date certain or uncertain, I should say. And so that leaves under the consent calendar, item number four, which is adoption of a resolution to appoint Adrian McCoy of Baker Tilly as the interim city auditor. And so first, do we have any members of the public who wish to speak on the consent calendar? Okay, our first speaker is Aram James. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to speak at oral communication, so I'm not asking to speak at consent. Did I miss oral communication by some odd chance? Hello? Mr. Mayor, I wanted to speak during oral communication.
Yeah, I hear you. Just one moment. So public comment will follow the consent.
Okay, my apologies. Yeah, I don't want to speak here.
Yep. Okay. So do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar? Councilmember Cormac?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second, and seconded by councilmember DeVois. And I see no other lights, so would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Saft?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coop?
Yes.
Councilmember DeVois?
Yes.
Mayor Burt?
Yes.
Councilmember Cormac?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. So we will now move on to, well, reiterate agenda changes. We have removed item number three, and actually, we have also, previous to the meeting, had removed item number five, which was a study session on rezoning at, I don't see the address there, but sorry, it doesn't list the address, but item number five has been removed and rescheduled to a date certain. So clerk recall the date on that.
Mr. Mayor, it's been rescheduled to October 17th at 5:00.
Thank you. October 17. And, sorry. Yeah, thank you. And our so we'll now vote on the consent calendar. Pardon me? Oh, we did. I'm sorry. Got it. Yeah. And so having approved the consent calendar, we do have the new interim city auditor, Adrian McCoy, available to say a few words, and we would welcome that.
Good evening, councilmembers and city manager of Palo Alto. Can you hear me?
We can. Welcome.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I am very pleased to be chosen as your interim city auditor and to serve the Palo Alto community. I believe that the role of the city auditor is to support the city of Palo Alto in serving as a good steward over its resources on behalf of the citizens of Palo Alto. My professional experience as a career auditor over the past 30 years include working in the public sector with city, state, and federal government entities, as well as public transportation, public schools, pension administrators, and regulatory and commercial banking institutions. Some examples of the projects that I have managed as an auditor and as a member of executive management include strategic planning and budgeting, investment management, enterprise resource planning systems implementation, cybersecurity incident response programs, accounting and reporting, and business process policies and procedures development. Managing these projects and other enterprise-wide initiatives has given me insight into the governance perspective and fiduciary responsibilities of council members, as well as the day-to-day responsibilities of the city manager and his executive team. I look forward to serving as a trusted advisor to the city of Palo Alto residents, the city council, and city management to facilitate the delivery of effective, efficient, and responsible services for the benefit of the Palo Alto community. Please feel free to contact me at any time to discuss your vision, initiatives, and concerns that you may have for the well-being of the city so that we may collaboratively serve the community as a cohesive team. It will be my pleasure to work with each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you, and we look forward to working with you. All right, so that concludes this item. Our next item is public comment, which is the opportunity for members of the public to speak on any item that is not otherwise on the agenda. So our first speaker is Aram James. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm looking for the clock here to start. Thank you. So Molly Stump, the city attorney, this is directed at you. On September 12th, your department, the city, denied my request for the footage of Officer Emberg's canine attack on Alexander Furrier that occurred on October 10th of 2021. Now, I consider it a cover-up because, of course, the police chief, Andrew Binder, doesn't, he's, it's his discretion if he wants to release the body-worn camera footage, but in fact, he put an obstacle in front of me, SB 1421, which, of course, you know, is a legislation that was created and gave some general exceptions to personnel and police investigatory reports, exception of the Public Records Act, which included an incident involving the use of force by an officer resulting in death or great bodily injury. And I draw your attention, Miss Stump, to the claim that was fired by Mr. Furrier on April 8th, 2022, the second page, the narrative, the first, the second full paragraph, the last sentence. "The dog bit me repeatedly on the left leg for what felt like a very long time, causing serious and lasting injury. The biting lasted longer than was reasonably reasonable or necessary." That's great bodily injury. I'm entitled to that, those police videos. So what's happened here is the police chief, Andrew Binder, who I like very much personally, I'm going after his policies, though, that's a very different distinction, said he was going to be transparent. Look, I, like I said to him in a letter, this is a white man's thing, these canine units, they go all the way back before slavery in this country, in Haiti and other places. We've had canines, they've been behind closed doors, there've been serious injuries. When I asked Robert Johnson for the racial breakdown of the five bite victims for the 36 months preceding my request, he wouldn't give it to me. I got those back in 2005. I've got the records here that I saved from that period of time. Canines need to be banned for purposes of biting human beings. This is white men's and white women's concern over black men and brown men, and it has been for centuries. When are we gonna get with it and ban canines across this country when they're used to bite people? We can't get the photographs. We can't get the videos. We pay for all of that stuff. Andrew Binder, I'm calling on you to, great on reversing the encryption thing, but now, all of a sudden, you're behind the eight ball because you're not being transparent. I asked you for those tapes. We sat down personally and talked. I've talked with you many times. Give up the video of the 39-second bites and the other officer's videos. And why aren't those other officers being prosecuted for failing to intervene? Thank you very much. Talk to you, Andrew. Give it up.
Our next speaker is Winter Dellenbach, to be followed by our final speaker, Matt Schlegel.
Yeah, I want to, yeah, hi, I wanted to just call to your attention some, two things that are available to you now that are on the September 27th council agenda, and the reason, I have a reason for calling your attention to it now, to them now. There are item number 11 under information. And September 27th agenda available to you now. The one item under item number 11 is the independent auditor's current, most current report. And the other, also under item, information item 11, is the Palo Alto Police Department's use-of-force report for the first half of this year. And I'm bringing this up now because I'm hoping and assuming that a council meeting with the IPA, the independent auditor, is has been agendized. Maybe the public hasn't seen when, or maybe the city manager's gonna, it'll show up tonight when the city manager does his, makes his comment. But meeting between council and the IPA has been agendized since his report is now available. And also, at the same time, I'm asking that there be time to, for council members to review the use-of-force report that the PAPD submitted. It's an interesting report and an important report that, of course, expanded the IPA's oversight of use of force, and they kind of go hand-in-hand, these two reports. And it's important to, that you all take a look at both of them. So thank you. That's all I wanted to say, to call your attention that those two are available. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Matt Schlegel. Welcome.
There's a climate rally this Friday at 5:00 PM in King Plaza in front of Palo Alto City Hall. Why? This rally is organized predominantly by student and youth climate groups like Fridays for Future, Sunrise Movement, and Palo Alto Student Climate Coalition. Students and young adults are acutely aware of the dual crises, the climate crisis and the mass extinction crisis that we are currently experiencing. We are quickly approaching a number of tipping points that we can avert if we immediately stop burning fossil fuels. For instance, the Greenland and West Antarctic ice sheets are vanishing. Greenland just had the biggest melt event on record, and it was in September, usually not a big melting month. Arctic permafrost is melting, and that will release immense amounts of methane. Tropical coral reefs are dying, and God forbid, the North Atlantic Ocean Current breaks down, turning Europe into Siberia and devastating our East Coast sea life. We must try to avoid these tipping points, which means we must all stop burning fossil fuels now. I trust you are all making efforts in your personal and professional lives to reduce your fossil fuel consumption and carbon emissions. And we are here now to take action at our community level. Students this Friday will rally and demonstrate for urgent action. I encourage you all to come, listen to their voices, their concerns, and their pleas for your leadership to take action that will meet our city's goal to reduce reduce emissions to 80% below 1990 levels by 2030. Specifically, they will encourage you to pass the SCAP Goals and Key Metrics Framework and to move forward with the heat pump water heater program to replace dirty fossil fuel water heaters in our city. We must roll these initiatives out in a way that all residents can participate, regardless of their levels of income and wealth. Palo Alto must demonstrate leadership in reducing carbon emissions and stopping climate collapse. If we don't lower our emissions, with all the wealth and resources available in our community, how can we expect or demand that of any other community? We must be the model community for leadership and action on our climate emergency. See you this Friday in front of City Hall at 5:00 PM.
Thank you. And that concludes our oral communications. Our next item is city manager comments. I believe Mr. Shikata is going to present them remotely.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Hopefully, my audio is coming through well, and I'd like to request the city clerk's assistance with slides. All right, if we could go to the second slide, as just queuing that up, I'll send you greetings from Columbus, Ohio, where I am attending the annual conference of the International City County Management Association, sharing and learning best practices in local government management. So with that, we remote in some news about Palo Alto. Let's see, could we go to slide mode? I guess it's a PDF. All right, we'll make do. Then let me lead off with updates on pandemic-related news. Most relevant, I think, for this week is acknowledgement that the county of Santa Clara issued late last week a rescission of previous health orders. This was primarily focused on health, health workers, healthcare workers, and a number of other areas that may have some implications for city operations. So we will take a closer look at what changes might come into place. But again, this really specifically reflects our continued progress in recovery from the pandemic. And so as such, we appreciate this action by the county health officer. That said, we are continuing to provide opportunities for testing in Palo Alto, both with the county of Santa Clara, as noted here on a couple of upcoming dates, on the 23rd of September and the 14th of October. Next slide, please. Then also acknowledging the unusual weather over the last couple of days. Then also acknowledging the unusual weather over the last couple of days, would note that city staff have responded to a number of weather-related requests or needs relating to tree failures in particular, as well as storm drain blockages. I think there's a mute needed there. The city clerk could assist with that. And let's see, I'll continue noting that, given the weather, it's a good reminder for all community members to prepare for inclement weather. In particular, here noting the importance of signing up for automated notifications through the alert s c c dot com. This is the Santa Clara County reverse nine one one notifications, as well as the police department's Nixal alerts. Information on this, as well as other weather-related programs and resources, are provided on our homepage under news. Next slide, please. And then in terms of upcoming events, and you may see a climate in both positive as well as negative relationships here in the upcoming slides. So I'll just note that this Friday at the Art Center, it is our regular Friday night at the Art Center program, and will include the artwork and opportunities to view the artwork of the artists relating to the Fire Transforms exhibition. This is an exhibition that will continue over the next several months, but does really draw stark recognition of the role of fire and how it affects so many parts of our lives. Next slide, please. Also upcoming next week is a workshop, and this is really a community meeting on the One Water Plan to evaluate the many uses and supplies, alternative sources related to our water supply, as well as water uses in the upcoming years. This One Water Plan is really an attempt to look at this comprehensively and follows this council's discussion last week with Valley Water on our own plans for recycled water. This will be next Wednesday, the twenty eighth, from six to seven thirty. Next slide, please. Then simply going forward to upcoming council meeting dates, would note that your council meeting next week has been moved to Tuesday rather than Monday in observance of Rosh Hashanah, and will focus on sustainability and climate action plan, goals and key actions. Will actually be the first of a two-part discussion that the city council will have. Again, dedicating quite a bit of time next week on this topic. And then continuing to the following Monday, October third, where, as shown here, S cap update part two, as well as council's opportunities for your discussion of any positions you would like to take on items on the November two thousand and twenty two ballot. And then as we look forward, recognizing that the October tenth city council meeting will be canceled in observance of Indigenous Peoples and Italian Heritage Day, as council has now designated. Then proceeding to the following week, on October seventeenth, we'll have the pre-screening that was deferred from today's agenda. This is the Creekside Inn, a proposed development at thirty four hundred and other addresses on El Camino Real. So the pre-screening, as was referenced earlier, will be held on October seventeenth. We also have a number of upcoming items here, green building code, N V cap, revised preferred alternatives, and then parklets. And I would note, as was noted by a member of the public earlier, a date to be scheduled for a discussion between the city council and the independent police auditor. With that, that concludes my report. And back to you, Mr. Mayor.
And that's Columbus, Ohio, not Italian Heritage, Ohio, I take it.
The irony has not been lost along the way.
All right, thanks. So our next item is a joint study session of the city council and the Utilities Advisory Commission regarding the fiber to the premise efforts. And I see, is Director Bachelor kicking this off, or? Oh, we'll get you that.
Thank you. Yes, I will, Chair Burr, or Mayor Burr. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Burr, council members, Chair Segal, and commissioners. Sorry, don't, oh, could you flip the screen, please? Tonight, we're going to discuss in the study session. We decided that what we were going to do is we're going to break this up into eight different segments. During the joint session, we'll be talking about the background, how we got here today, as well as some survey results, some modeling and some risk mitigation. And in the second hour, that what we would be is that we'll be talking about the financial, financial options and the organization structures.
Before you continue, Director, we have, is it two members of the U A C here? And I don't know what the plan was to include them within the, I, I didn't know if it was at the tables here, or if there's only two, we, we would have room up at the dais. So maybe we'd like to invite them at this time. Yep. Sure.
Mayor Burr, I believe some of the other commissioners, commissioners are on their way. I don't know, do you know of anyone accessing online? Okay, so we have at least two of the three members of the fiber subcommittee who are joining via Zoom. And so at least we have a quorum here. If we're the only two in chambers, we're happy to join you wherever you prefer.
Why don't you go ahead and come join us on the dais? Let's see, do we have chairs, though? We can bring them from the other room. Sorry for that delay.
Quite okay. So as, as I was mentioning is that we broke this down and for the council session portion of it is to talk a little bit more about the analysis that we have done from a financial standpoint, as well as some financial options, and then also looking at the organizational structure. Next slide, please. One more. Thank you. So some of the items to, that to consider during this study session tonight is looking at the marketing analysis and the estimated costs that we were able to obtain, as well as we'll be talking about some key values, as well as some of the risks that are involved if we move forward in owning an F T T P network. And the last thing is, is to talk about the three different models of how the organization could be structured and how the cost will roll up in those three different models. So I would also like to thank, well, next slide. I want to thank the U A C Fiber Subcommittee for working with our city staff and with our consultant Magellan. They put a lot of work and efforts into understanding this, this very difficult task at hand. And I'd like to have one of them, or maybe all three. I see Commissioner Metz is here. I think Commissioner Johnson or is on. Don't know if Commissioner Smith is on. But they would like to address the council as well. So with that, is Lauren Smith? Are you on?
Not sure. I see Director Metz, you were part of the subcommittee? And we're trying to figure out who would like to introduce your.
Your memo and also a couple of slides that they would like to talk about.
And it would be done at this time, you're saying?
Yes, please. Commissioner Metz, are, are you prepared to?
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Metz, I'll be speaking for the subcommittee. Both Commissioners Johnston and Smith were not able to attend in person.
Should we begin then? Can we get our slides up? Okay, thank you. Next slide, please.
Okay. The U A C Subcommittee on Fiber, after reviewing the business financial models, and especially the customer survey, like to make two recommendations. First is that CPAU proceed forward evaluating plans to offer fiber-based broadband services. But also, we have some specific recommendations that address the risks that we see as inherent in the city developing internet service provider. Next slide, please. So just a couple, and I won't go through all this. I'd just like to touch on a key, couple of key findings. One, first is that about a third of households were satisfied with current internet service. I think we need to be careful in assessing that because it kind of means that the majority were actually satisfied, to a greater or lesser degree, with services that they have today. I think it highlights how competitive this business would be. Also, in terms of the survey, the customer choice criteria, price, speed, and reliability were the top choice criteria. And price was number one, not by a lot, but it was the number one choice criteria. And I think that, again, highlights how competitive this business is. I think one particularly bright note from this customer survey is that about fifty percent of households buy internet separately from entertainment services. Certainly was a surprise to me, and I think it highlights that it's the feasibility of offering a broadband service separate from entertainment, which was one of my personal concerns going into this. Next slide, please. In terms of benefits, I think those will be talked about by Director Bachelor, by Magellan. So I think we won't talk about that. We'd be happy to answer questions during the discussion section about, you know, our perspective on some of these. But I think everyone is familiar with, with benefits, and those will be addressed in detail by others, so I won't. Like to turn to the last slide. So this slide talks about, we, we think, you know, in parallel with our recommendation to proceed with evaluating the business, we see these four risks as very important to deal with. First one is competition. This is the, which is super important because this would be the only utility service that CPU has that competes with other organizations. And that really, and those organizations are well-financed incumbent competitors. So competition is particularly important. Take rate assumption is the second risk that we see. The viability of the business and the cash flow over, particularly over the first ten years or so, depends highly on the speed of rolling out the service and the speed with which people accept it. And the ultimate viability depends totally on how many people will accept the service. Third risk that we see is technology obsolescence. Particularly concerned about five G wireless. Some of the five G mobile service providers are offering fixed internet service for, you know, home internet use. So we see that as a particularly important new technology, and we see it as both a threat and an opportunity for potential Palo Alto internet service. It's a threat, obviously, in terms of being able to roll out broadband service more quickly than might be possible with fiber drops. It also could be an opportunity in terms of allowing the city to roll out its service faster. Also, the wireless requires a broadband optical fiber backhaul. So the, the city has the wholesale network. So there's an opportunity for the city to provide backhaul for such a service, whether the city or somebody else is providing the last foot to the, to the home. The fourth risk, which I'm sure will be discussed in detail here tonight, is capital investment and cash flow. A lot of money involved, a lot resting on how fast revenue can be ramped up. And I'll, I'll leave it at that. I think we'll be happy whenever we have an open discussion to talk about both our recommendations positively, and also the risk and concerns that we have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Metz. At this time, I would like to introduce John Honker, who is the president of Magellan, who will be going through the presentation tonight, and staffs on, ready to answer any of your questions as we move forward. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Dean Bachelor, and it's a pleasure to see everyone tonight. Mayor Burr, members of the council and the U A C. John Honker with Magellan, been the project executive on the project for the past year and a half, and excited to give you an information update on where we are in the project and share with you some of the findings. Next slide, please. There we go. So, so let's level set first on, on, again, sort of why we're here and what was approved by council at this last go around. One was, you know, upgrading and making more resilient the city's existing fiber backbone. As you all know, the city and CPAU own a fiber backbone that supports city needs, the business community, and also city departments and the electric utility itself, right? Making communications easier, cheaper, and more reliable for all of the city departments and the utility. The city is really authorized that, you know, finding ways to upgrade that backbone and making that backbone more resilient, both for the city's internal needs as the city and its utilities do more online and need more communications infrastructure, but also for commercial fiber leasing. As you all know, you have a significant commercial fiber business today, one of the most significant in the country for cities to, to own. And the upgrade of that fiber backbone is going to give you more capacity, more fiber to be able to serve the business community's needs for another twenty years, like the network's done over the past twenty years, right? That's a testament to sort of the vision of Palo Alto, is to have a fiber backbone before a lot of other cities did. And now you're reaping the benefits of that. And the goal is to reinforce and reinvest in that backbone to make it stronger and more resilient for the city and its departments. Also, you authorize the fiber to the premise business case, which includes really the blueprint for the network, right? The, the engineering design for the network, as well as all of the business planning surrounding that to help inform council and the U A C of what a fiber business case would look like for the city, right? Financial analysis, market demand, risk analysis, opportunity analysis, all those things that need to go into a business case for fiber to the premise. We're nearing the completion of those phases, and we're excited to, to kind of report on those findings tonight. Next slide, please. So we'll talk first about the survey results, because these are really important as we think about. as we think about demand from Palo Alto citizens and businesses that are looking to utilize fiber. Why would they use fiber? What types of take rates could we expect? And what would they potentially pay for fiber services? Next slide, please. So the survey was distributed to the entire Palo Alto Utilities email database, about 22,000 surveys across the entire market. It was also published on the Fiber Hub, and community members were encouraged to take the survey. Those results, as we compiled those, over 3,200 surveys were completed with a little under a 15% response rate. Now, that's a significant amount when we look at surveys nationally. Most cities that we work with, where we're surveying the populations, we're looking at maybe a 3% to 5% take rate. So using the same type of methodology. So we see, you know, strong results in the community. It's obviously a engaged community, and fiber is an important topic for them. Next slide, please. In addition to the survey itself, a deposit program was enacted to have residents put down a financial deposit on fiber service. And this was really a no, no refund, it's a refundable deposit of $50 that would allow residents to show their financial commitment to a project, to the project, not saying up for service yet, but putting a deposit down just to show their commitment and their interest in the project. Since about 703 surveys were, or deposits were made totaling about $37,000, $37,000 that was raised from the community for fiber to the home, or fiber to the premise. That's significant, right? Residents are showing some financial commitment there. Next slide, please. Some of the key findings in the survey. So the deposit program plus the survey itself, you know, as we looked at that, again, what we saw is really important findings for you to understand, or the satisfaction levels, and, you know, the fact that there were, there's about a third of residents that were dissatisfied with service. You know, the survey data also told us that there was a lack of some competition in very high-speed fiber services, and there was only one provider of those services in certain parts of the city. As Commissioner Metz had mentioned before, price, speed, and reliability are the most three, the three most important aspects of fiber of internet services for the residents. And as we looked at that, we looked at these different opportunities. What it really teased out is the type of network that residents are looking for, you know, provides high speeds, you know, affordable prices, and also a network that provides a high reliability with potentially no service caps, symmetrical speeds, meaning the same downloads and the upload speeds, and more opportunities to support their entertainment needs, right? We talked about TV in particular as not being a key service in Palo Alto that would potentially need to be offered as part of the fiber to the premise network. Many, in many communities, you have a triple play provider where they're providing voice, video, and data, and that video piece, the TV piece, is typically an important part. But in communities that have cut the cord, and when I say that, meaning where a lot of residents aren't, aren't receiving traditional cable TV and are using either Netflix or Hulu, that part, that bundle is not as important. And that's important competitively for Palo Alto as it considers fiber is not needing to provide cable TV as part of the overall package makes the service offering much simpler, much lower cost, and the overall financial sustainability of the network much stronger because cable TV has typically been a lost leader in communities where that service has to be offered. At the best, it's a zero-profit service. So we look at those as really kind of summary of the key findings in internet and what that fiber network could potentially provide to meet residents' needs based on the survey results. Next slide, please. So the quantitative part of the survey really focused on estimating take rates. And the take rate estimate based on the survey, based on that 37, or 3,400 survey results, we're looking at about 37% to 42% of households that would potentially subscribe to service. And services could be provided in a number of different speeds and tiers based on what residents were looking for. So think about these survey results and the pricing and the speeds as really what the residents have said. Now, this doesn't mean that this has to be your end-user price, meaning this is a snapshot at one point in time. As we look forward to actually deploying a network, think about these rates changing. They could be potentially lower than they are listed here as you move into fiber. But this is really what the community has said. Based on different combinations of offers presented to them in the survey, these are the prices and the speeds that they would potentially be looking for, both on the residential and the business side. Minimum take rates are also important because we need to look at what are break even and what are, minimum take rates are needed to be financially sustainable. Looking at the survey data, again, we expect between, based on what the survey results said, between 37% and 42%, your minimum take rates for that break even are between 27% and 30%. So again, as Commissioner Metz said, you know, take rates are very important, and keeping up with subscriptions and growing quickly is critical to the overall fiber project. So being in those, but it's important to know what your minimums are for long-term sustainability. Next slide, please. So really, the value proposition of city-owned fiber. If the city were going to offer services, what would be important in those services? One, obviously reliability and speed. Two, reducing community spend. For example, if the city could reduce pricing by 10% over what the current internet rates are, at these take rates, at 37% to 42%, the community would potentially save over $15 million over 10 years. So as we look at the magnitude of savings by small reductions in internet service, it adds up over time for the population. Now, the city has to still be competitive, right? Has to be able to sell at a margin, but also be competitively priced. The goal is really to have a net positive impact on the community to reduce internet costs Palo Alto-wide. Equal access for all, unlike the way services are distributed in the community today. In some places, you can have two providers, and some places, you only have one gigabit provider. One of the goals would be to potentially enable access for 100% of the Palo Alto community, 100% of households and businesses. A couple other important ones, more control and more choice, taking decision-making for internet into your own hands and being able to have control over how services provided, how customer service is provided, and the overall reliability of the network. Next slide, please. We'll talk a little bit about the business models next. Next slide. So, you know, a major portion of the project in the business plan is determining what business models Palo Alto would be best utilizing for deploying a fiber to the premise network. And, you know, cities range in different types of business models from providing all the services themselves internally by hiring employees to outsourcing 90% of the operations. And then there's a number of models that are in between. So think of these as variations on the continuum, depending on how many functions, how many business functions the city wants to in-source through its own staff versus outsource to strategic vendors. And why would it do that, right? In some cases, cost; in other cases, capabilities; in other cases, control, right? In some cases, you may not want to outsource key things like sales and marketing. That's a core function of any broadband business that's critical to the success of the business, and it's very difficult to outsource that. Other functions like engineering, or customer service, or tech support, we see cities all over the country outsourcing those. And those are things to consider where there's an opportunity for a private sector partner to take some of those on at a better cost, but still maintaining quality. Those can be a way to offset some of the risk, but also still provide quality service. So the project team really looked at a number of different models, including fully in-source and how many staff that would take versus hybrid and versus fully outsourced models. Next slide, please. Just some sort of parameters around those. As we look at the in-source models, we're looking at potentially 25 new employees in Palo Alto Fiber. It's part of the existing organization. All the way down to an outsourced model where you only staff five employees, and your swings in costs are millions of dollars a year, right? So as you look at potentially, you know, a fully in-source option, you know, staffing costs are higher, overheads are higher versus some of those outsourcing models where those costs are lower over the long term. Next slide, please. And finally, going into the risks and mitigation portion of the business plan. Next slide. And some of these have already been discussed a bit, but, you know, competition is a risk in any business, and it's a big risk in a broadband business, too. So we have to look at ways to ensure that Palo Alto Fiber is successful at competing, and that means providing superior service first and foremost, delivering on that service, and being able to manage the business in a competitive environment. That means adjusting to what the competition is doing, making decisions on pricing, on marketing, on sales, on strategy that have to happen quickly and in real time, and being able to track either the success or the failure of those strategies and how they've been implemented. We put that as a risk level high because it is, and it's in any business, right? It's the biggest, risk is part of any business. So, you know, how does the city mitigate the risk, right? By competing successfully, right? Technology superiority and better service quality, utilizing your existing brand. And that's important because the brand of Palo Alto goes far in the community. We saw that in the survey results. So we have to look at that as a lever to use to compete and to use in the competitive business. Technology obsolescence, we talked about that as another risk and looking at how the city can protect itself against technology change, right? A community like Palo Alto changes part of culture here, right? So as we look at that, how do we adapt? How do we both utilize new technologies to compete and provide better service and delivery of those services? And also be able to manage competition and stay ahead of the curve? Because as technology, new technologies come out, Palo Alto has to be on the front end of that, has to be evaluating those technologies, like we talked about earlier in wireless, to make sure there's a path to adopt technologies like wireless, if there's a better way to offer that service at a lower cost. So the city has to be on front of that. And as you look at cities that are successful at providing broadband services, right, their staff is typically on the front end of that, right? They're at the vendor conferences. They're talking to their key strategic partners about new technologies that are being deployed and adopting the ones that make the most sense for them. Next slide, please. Service quality, of course. Service quality is key to any business, and it's key to the overall, the prior slide. It's key to the implementation of Palo Alto. You've got to be able to provide superior customer service, better reliability, and faster speeds than the competition. And finally, fiscal sustainability. Again, looking at what happens if things don't go exactly the way they planned? How will the city potentially mitigate the financial risk around the project? And we've kind of worked with finance to determine some alternatives to either mitigate those strategies or change the strategy to be able to right the ship if the city is experiencing financial issues as a result of the network. And next slide. So that covers really an update on the overall fiber to the premises project, and we'd like to open it up to Q and A from UAC and council.
Thank you. Excuse me. So before going to questions from the council, Chair Segal, do you have any additional information that you'd like to add from the commission?
Thanks, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation, John. I think I want to let the council know, and we had a cover letter in the memo that was provided by the subcommittee, and we really appreciate, we know the subcommittee spent a lot of time, and we really appreciate it. As a full commission, we did not have a opportunity really to vet that memo. And so I just want to make sure the council is aware of that, and hopefully by the end of tonight, we'll have had an opportunity to address most of those issues.
Great. And tonight is only a study session. It's not going to be action items. So this is really to, for the purpose of getting us all up to speed and to be able to air questions and have a thoughtful dialogue and then figure out what we might want to do in terms of actions at a future meeting. So do we have questions from colleagues before wading into a real discussion? Okay. Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yeah, sorry about this. I'm going to sort of dive into weenie questions right up front. How much of the city is not covered by Comcast?
So from our, from the survey data that we've found, the vast majority is covered by Comcast.
By Comcast. And how many Comcast Fiber?
Oh, no. So differentiating, we see most of the services being cable-based services. That's typically what Comcast provides. Comcast has a lot of fiber out there as well. Not directly providing fiber to homes necessarily, more providing maybe fiber to businesses or for their own internal uses or to connect their nodes.
Okay, but broadband, Comcast covers the whole city?
Correct.
And AT&amp;T? I think it's, so I saw a stat in here that Comcast market share here is 73% and AT&amp;T's is 25% or 70% and 25%. What's that for?
Well, based on the survey results, that's about what the market estimates were.
Is that for broadband or fiber?
Well, let's say internet services, right? So that could be fiber or broadband, or fiber or cable services.
Got it. So there's been a lot of discussion of, there are parts of the city that Comcast and AT&amp;T will not be easily able to serve with fiber. Okay? Do we know how much of the city that is, and is that a part of the city that we will be able to serve with fiber?
So there's, as we look at the survey data, we see about 25% to 30% of the city potentially covered by AT&amp;T offering fiber services directly to homes.
Okay.
And when we looked at the data and we look at the maps and understand where Palo Alto also has electrical lines, we look at most of those areas being aerial, right? Meaning overhead telephone pole, fiber on telephone poles, which is a less expensive way to deploy fiber, right? Than directional drilling under the streets, you know, restoring, managing traffic, et cetera. So in the areas where, and this is typical for most providers, they're going to go where it's cheapest to build typically, right? Just makes business sense to pick up those homes. So there's another 70% to 75% of the community right now that doesn't have fiber that Palo Alto can build to, right? That was part of the overall engineering design was to estimate, you know, where the city could build to reach those additional homes, what the costs of that would be. And of course, the cost will be higher there because that is mostly underground area. But there is also some aerial portion of the city that this.
And you think that's about 70% of the city?
We're estimating about 70%, correct.
Okay.
I mean, to be 100% clear, like, the city can build 100%, right? Can build the entire, all the residences and businesses in the community. But what's left, what's not been built by AT&amp;T right now is we're estimating about 30%.
Okay. So next weenie question, if I can get this off in a minute and 40 seconds here. It's good you guys did a conjoint analysis, that's key. When you did that, did you ask people? I mean, were you seeking, would you subscribe to a gigabit at $89.99? Or were you asking in context of competition? That is, would you switch from Comcast to City of Palo Alto at a gigabit at $89.99? So was you're asking about, would you subscribe or would you switch? Which was the focus of your conjoint study?
So the conjoint was really focused on the switching aspect of service. Meaning if, we make the assumption. Meaning if, we make the assumption in the conjoint analysis that they already have service from one of the providers, either AT&amp;T or Comcast or a third provider.
Right. Fiber service or low speed?
Doesn't matter. For the purposes of the conjoint, we wanted to really know that they were subscribing to internet services.
Yeah.
Either from Comcast using cable or from AT&amp;T using fiber.
Okay.
And would they switch to a city offered service, you know, at prices and speeds that were comparable or greater? And the way the conjoint worked was to give them multiple offers.
Right.
And let them go through the iteration to determine which was their best choice from the city. So it looked at that switching.
Yeah.
And also for people who didn't have, households that didn't have high speed internet, you know, what would be their preferred provider?
Okay, so people who didn't have it already, okay. And then finally, you don't happen to know off the top of your head what Atherton Fibers take rate in Atherton and Mendel Park is, do you?
No, I don't.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember DuBois.
Yeah, hi. Kind of one high level question, just given all the cities you've worked with. How does our business plan financing, the engineering design you've done? How does that challenge stack up to, I guess, other cities you've worked with? Like, how would you characterize Palo Alto's position?
Yep, that's a great question. So I think the way we would look at the Palo Alto situation is, you know, what's working in your favor? Demand. We see higher demand, higher cord cutting rates, which eliminates the need to have a cable TV package as part of your internet service. Those are big benefits for the community. What is working against you is cost. It's more expensive to build in Palo Alto than in other communities. And that cost will drive up, of course, the overall revenue needed to cover the costs and the debt service. Now, the financial plan is sustainable for sure, but your costs are much higher than what we're seeing in other communities.
And I just quickly wanted to get through several questions. Just really understanding the construction assumptions, like it seemed like there was some notes that said depending on what the City of Palo Alto utilities will allow. I mean, when you built the financial model, were you, what were you assuming in certain terms of trenching and?
So the overall assumption was that the fiber network would follow the electric network in terms of whether it's aerial or over or underground, right? Where you have poles, you want to use the poles to cut down on the construction costs or cut down on the construction, both from a cost perspective and just from a community impact perspective, right? Less, less streets torn up, less restoration, et cetera, over a shorter.
Sorry to, I'm on a clock, but yeah, like we were talking about like micro trenching versus kind of how deep we need to go.
We were very conservative on the construction costs, so we didn't utilize any micro trenching. We utilized, you know, 90% directional drilling on the underground because we know there are micro trenching opportunities. But we didn't want to put that, put those numbers into the study because until you're actually in the ground and actually working with micro trenching, it's very difficult to estimate the costs. Directional drilling is a very kind of standard cost. We know the numbers, the contractors know the numbers. So they give you kind of your worst case estimates for construction.
And did the business case include the cost to replace power poles? Or was that outside of the plan?
We did, yep. We estimated the, what we call the make ready costs, which are either prepping existing poles for new fiber. Or in the case that they fail, new fiber installation, replacing those poles with new poles.
So do you know offhand, how many poles do you think?
Well, we were looking at about under 10% of the poles that needed to be replaced. So you have about 6,200 poles. So we're looking at, you know, under 1,000 poles for replacement.
And would that cost fall on the fiber utility or to be shared with everybody on the pole?
It would be typically, yeah, be shared across the different users.
Then last two questions, how many broadband providers have unionized labor, do you know?
I'm sorry, I missed the question?
How many of the broadband providers like AT&amp;T, Comcast, Verizon, are they unionized?
Typically, they are.
Okay.
Yep.
And the last question, so part of the funding, I think was for the electric utility for AMI smart grid. Are there other opportunities for things like smart water, smart gas? You know, do we expand beyond electricity at some point?
So Councilmember, so that is part of that cost. So there is cost from the AMI portion of it because we are AMI in the water and the gas side. So you have those collectors, so they're paying their share as well for that fiber and that backbone right now.
Okay, but I thought it was only from the electric utility?
No, it's also from the gas and for the water side as well.
Okay, thanks.
And commissioners, if you have questions, can you wave to me because you don't have buttons? Councilmember Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to staff for all this work, being here, answering our questions. And welcome to our UAC commissioners. Nice to share the dais with you. A few, few questions. First one, curious to the, to what extent is the digital divide within our communities? So like the disparity of internet connection amongst various demographics within the city?
That's a very good question. I think what we've seen in Palo Alto is it's smaller than, you know, most communities. You know, as we looked at survey data, you know, less than 1% of residents are not subscribing to internet services. And typically it was because they have internet at work, they have a hotspot, they have another reason, or they're a part time resident, they don't live here all the time. Those were kind of the typical responses that we got. So, you know, as we look at it at a general level, we don't, definitely don't see as much of a divide in Palo Alto that we do in other communities.
Okay, but it does, it does exist to some extent.
There's always a divide, yeah. Every community has a divide, you know? So there are a few, and the survey data, you will have sort of all the raw data. So you can see kind of what that looks like and what kind of responses some of those folks that don't subscribe to internet access have provided to the city.
Great, thank you. I think that's one of the kind of exciting things about the program, be able to address then that issue for some Palo Altons. Going back, you have an exchange with Councilmember DuBois about aerial construction using the utility poles. And I'm curious, I imagine there'll be a lot of residents with this concern about how that, what the aesthetics of the, of that would look like in relation to like cell towers being placed on utility poles. Can you, can you describe how it's similar, how it's different, the look of that?
So absolutely. So, you know, we are adding another cable to existing utility poles. You know, cables relatively small, so we're not adding a significant amount of volume to the poles. But, you know, there's one more line on the poles that that's going to be there somewhat discreet because you have other communications utilities that are already using the poles. So it's, it's not, for example, if we're on a certain part of the pole, we're not going to be adding another line, you know, that's in a, in a completely open space and bare space where there aren't other attachers already. So we don't see adding a huge amount of visual disturbance on sightlines to the existing poles. But definitely less, less so than, you know, having a wireless transmitter on each one, right? That would be definitely more disruptive typically.
Okay, thank you. And as we move forward, it'd be helpful to be able to maybe see some images of what that looks like in other communities. So I noticed there was a significant price increase for both fiber backbone and FTP since just last year. Do we anticipate that those costs are going to continue to rise at similar rates? Or we might see a drop in that as inflation and supply chain issues improve?
And you're right in that the supply chain issues have created price increases in all aspects of fiber, both on the labor side and on the material side. We're starting to see a bit of flattening on, on the materials and some of the labor. We don't expect prices to go much higher, but we continually are watching the market because you want to be on top of that, you want to be understanding when materials are available, what the demand is. And also be looking at commodity prices over the next 12 to 18 months. We're starting to see those flatten as well. So we expect that, you know, there may be some small additional price increases, but nothing compared to what we've seen from 2021 to 2022, where things were, you know, prices were up 20, even 50% on some materials. You know, petroleum based goods up, you know, 40 to 50%. So, but it's important to be continually watching those.
Right, that's a relief, but unlikely to drop.
Unlikely to drop, at least in the near term.
Okay. And one thing that kind of struck me a bit was why staff is concerned of difficulty accessing the FTP network for multi dwelling units. And I was just kind of curious, is that more based on the difficulty of building the network to reach those units? Or is it more because it requires the owners and the operators of those housing complexes to, to agree to connect?
So there's a couple of items there. One is right of entry agreements with the property owners. That's part of any broadband business though. So as you go into a multi unit, if it's a apartment complex, condo or a commercial multi unit, you're going to need to go ahead of that with a multi, with a property owner to get that right of entry agreement. Overall, it's much less expensive to serve MDU units if they're significant, right? 20 and above, maybe 50 units, because you only need typically one piece of equipment to serve that entire building versus single family homes where you need 50 pieces of equipment to serve each home. And you have 50 service drops to each home. So more front end work that has to be done to get those multi units on the network. But better, better revenue streams and lower overall cost per subscriber typically.
Okay, that makes more sense. And then kind of going back to the discussion on the, on the take rate at 27 to 30% in order for revenues to be able to exceed expenses. Does that include expenses of the kind of the hefty startup fee of over 100 million? Or that, or does that just cover ongoing program costs?
That's all inclusive. So, so think of, think of that 27 to 30% as covering all of your, all of your debt service costs. You finance the network, right? You spend the money to finance the network upfront. It includes all of the expenses you need to cover debt service, renewal and replacement, general operating costs, staff, all of that. So that's really the target number that you want to try to get to, minimum.
Great. And let's see, a little time left to get one more question in. Has the city had any exploratory conversations with neighboring cities or the county to see if there is an interest in a JPA?
I don't believe so at this time.
Okay. It was just kind of pointed out in the staff report as a possibility if council's interested. Great, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Cormatt.
Thank you, Mayor Burt. Welcome, Mr. Honker and our, our UAC commissioners. It is indeed nice to have you. Okay, so I'll have some questions for staff and then actually for, for council members in our next go around. But let me start with you, Mr. Honker. The expected take rate, 37 to 42. Did you just extrapolate straight from the people who responded or did you adjust the number in any way?
Well, we actually, we had to adjust the number because the, the raw numbers, when you do a conjoint analysis, typically you'll have a perfect market environment. Meaning assuming you're presenting offers to residents, all those offers are already available in the market, including the City of Palo Alto's. So the startup, the startup requirements, the execution of sales and marketing, all of the business factors that may reduce take rates aren't built into that. So the raw take rate, so the raw conjoint analysis came up with a, a take rate of closer to 60%.
Okay.
In a perfect world.
So you just did it.
And we discounted that.
All right. So, you know, I know you've spent a lot of time with the UAC talking about the choice of the business model. How does the choice of the business model increase or decrease the risks that both the subcommittee and you have identified?
So if we look at key business functions, where the city may not have certain capabilities, that would help reduce the risks on some of the business, on the overall operation, right? If we look at tech support, if the city doesn't have a capability and needs to ramp up quickly, it can outsource that to a quality provider with a good track record and control that provider in a strong contract. Ultimately, that'll help reduce the risk for Palo Alto, right? Tech support, customer service, engineering, field services, anywhere where there's expertise in the, in the private sector, where the city doesn't feel it has the, either the runway, meaning being able to ramp up quickly enough to keep the business moving fast, or just the general capabilities to staff those resources, those would be opportunities to outsource.
Okay. All right, so it doesn't, okay. So one of the questions that occurs to me, I probably should have asked this earlier somewhere in the process. Do we have to allow other providers to access the fiber? Are there any rules or regulations about fiber that are different from other utilities? For example, I believe AT&amp;T allows another provider to use it, right? Is there a requirement if we build this or is that an option?
There are certain requirements that would, would require you to share certain resources. For example, conduit, if conduit was available and the city didn't have specific plans for it, like other ISPs and other carriers, the city would have to allow use of that conduit by another provider.
Okay, so the conduit. So one of the people who's come to my office hours has raised the 5G question and I appreciate the subcommittee bringing it up as well. You know, one of the last times we went through this, there was another technology approach that everyone was super excited about, which turns not to have panned out. So how worried should we be about whether or not 5G will just supplant this? And people will cut like every cord and just literally go over the air? How should we think about the risk and, and opportunity of 5G?
I think there's, there's probably, there's two ways you want to think about the risk. And like we said before, it's a threat and an opportunity, every technology is. For the city, if an emerging technology comes out, let's say 5G, that helps you reduce cost over the next, let's say, five to seven years as you're building this network. There's no reason the city can't switch and start utilizing that technology to provide services to the community instead of the last mile via fiber. Long-term, thinking about overall strategy, the city is going to have the gold standard being fiber to the home, right? That fiber to the home network would be available to every home, every business. It costs money to bring a new technology in and to be a new provider in Palo Alto, right? So if a new provider wants to come in and provide services to the city, they're going to be looking at the risk, just like you're looking at the risk today. And if there's an entrenched provider, or actually three entrenched providers at that point, Comcast, AT&amp;T and Palo Alto Fiber, the opportunity for more market share or to potentially dislodge one of the entrant, one of the entrenched providers is going to be very challenging, right? So if I'm looking at that from a market perspective, I'm going to say, well, I could go into Palo Alto where there's three providers and it's a hyper competitive market. Or I could deploy my capital somewhere else that's less competitive and potentially, you know, get higher returns on my investment. So we look at that as a market perspective to say, well, you know, could an entrant come in with a lower cost technology? It's not only about the lower, lower cost technology, it's about all the other costs that required to come into a market and compete in Palo Alto, sales and marketing, right? Customer service, field services, tech support, all those are required.
I guess I was thinking more that 5G is going to be here because people will expect and demand that and it will be provided by cellular companies. And so if it's already there, maybe that people just won't need this.
And it's been a long road for 5G as well.
I understand, yeah. Okay, so my time's up. I'll continue in our next round.
Chair Segal.
Thank you. I had a couple of questions that we didn't, we didn't have an opportunity to acknowledge that the current providers are focused on aerial lines, just as our analysis started with for our, for our, the way we price out the costs and when we'll have revenues based on take rates and we start with overhead. And I'm wondering if you've looked at flipping that and starting with underground? Because one, the underground districts don't currently have any other option for fiber. And two, you know, because they have no other options, maybe that take rate would be higher. And I know it's not that easy to figure out where exactly AT&amp;T offers fiber, but from my very unscientific analysis, it seems to be only in places with overhead.
It's a very good point and it's definitely a worthwhile strategy to try to raise your take rates in the underground areas. And, you know, if we can get to much higher take rates there and have captive markets, it, underground construction makes perfect sense, right? We could start in those areas where it makes sense. And I think that as you're moving forward here and we're getting closer to, you know, the final sort of work product, that's definitely analysis that can happen, right? Let's look at the pros and cons of going into aerial areas first, potentially with more competition versus underground areas where, you know, Palo Alto Fiber may be the only game in town as far as a fiber connection. Maybe those take rates are 10, 15, 20% higher, right? Which is going to really help support the overall cost of construction.
Thanks. And then another question is, as we, if, if one of the options is mostly outsourced, I'm wondering if any community I'm wondering if any community or if you've thought about actually entering into a joint venture with one of the current providers, so that if we're outsourcing anyway, some way where we can rely on their expertise. Service, for example, is a concern I've heard from community members. We're, you know, we're good at digging and putting in lines, but we don't have experience on the service side, and they do. Have you seen that?
Sure. We we've seen that in other communities where sort of a sort of, you know, more of a public private partnership option is is utilized, and even other cases where an existing broadband utility, another public provider is partnering with a new broadband utility like Palo Alto Fiber to provide some of those services. So for example, Chattanooga in Tennessee, they outsource almost all the functions that new broadband providers need to get started, customer service, tech support, provisioning, billing. They provide those per customer as a service to help other utilities, to help other cities get off the ground.
Great. And then just the other concern, I I tried to talk to a bunch of community members who did not participate in the survey for whatever reason, just to try to get insight for maybe less aware residents. And one of the questions that came up is whether there are any opportunity costs if the utility goes down this path and and focuses on fiber, either because whether it's a revenue bond or another bond, if that would, if that risks being able to get a bond, for example, for electrical grid updates or some other large city project.
Chair Siegel, so I I think we're going to cover that in the second half of our study. And if I could just go back to your first question, I think one of the other things we have to think about is is that for doing the underground portion, that's sixty to seventy percent of the cost. So this hundred million dollars to start off in the underground portion of it makes, could make some sense for gaining. But the thing is, is that thirty percent to thirty five percent of it is cost for the aerial, but the rest is going to be the underground. We've seen costs somewhere between a hundred to a hundred and twenty five dollars a foot to dig. So that that's part of the strategy when we've talked about that. Maybe we should look at the aerial portion first. But again, it's not a hundred percent that we will look at as well. But just to let you know, that's the costly part of the business.
Thanks for clarifying that, Director Bachelor. And on that one other question that came up, talking to citizens was whether if if we're going to drill, if we're going to lay underground, if we can combine it with other projects.
Well, I think, you know, the easiest one is to look at the electric. Can we underground electric at the same time? And I think the question is, or the answer to that is, it's going to be very difficult. Because what ends up happening is is that if we are going to move forward with, as we've been talking about, strengthening our grid, we are going to have to wait until something happens with this fiber or vice versa. And it takes a lot of coordination portion. But if you think about it, is when we did the undergrounding in the downtown on University, we replaced a water main and a gas main, and we also installed twenty seven hundred feet of fiber or conduit, excuse me, conduit in that area. So we could start looking at, maybe when we start doing some water, gas, wastewater sides, we could start looking at combining some of the fiber in that, and then it won't have any impact on the electric side as well.
Vice Mayor Koo.
First, I want to thank the subcommittee for their work on this, and also it's great to have our joint session here today, and thanks to staff also. I wanted to ask other cities with similar size like Palo Alto, population, et cetera, what is their staffing model? What that has been successful?
So it really depends on the city. We see most of the municipal utilities staffing themselves, meaning they're providing their own employees, covering just about all of the operations. Where they outsource some of those services, maybe it's, obviously, construction is outsourced, engineering is outsourced, but the core functions, providing customer service, you know, tech support, installations, managing the network, billing, those are typically provided by by staff.
That's very helpful. I mean, I see the table one showing the pros and cons for staffing, for staffing perspective, you know, I think institutional knowledge, quality of service, total control, you know, that's that's something that it would be quite important to gain confidence, right? The other one is phasing the build in. My only concern is if it's fifteen years out, then the cost is going to go up too, right? Whereas if we just do everything at one time, then we keep the cost at what was quoted to us. Is that so?
Less, there's probably less impact in inflation, right, over a shorter term bill, meaning you get the bill done in three to five years, and it's complete, all the capital costs are paid for. Yeah, absolutely that. If we if we trail it over a fifteen year period, which was sort of option two in your packets where you don't take on any new debt, you are more than likely going to see more cost in construction and labor and materials over that period of time.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Forsell.
Thank you. I think most of my questions have been covered by others, so I just have a couple of small things left to ask about. Take rate is key. Probably the one of the most important things to consider, because it's very important that a potential investment pay itself back. What do you see as take rates in other cities that already have one or two incumbents offering fiber and or other forms of broadband service?
You're typically looking at between thirty five and fifty percent in most cities that are offering it over about a five year period. When we look at most utilities, similar to Palo Alto, that's that's the take rate range they've been in.
And do you have any insight as to what drives the uptake in those communities where there already are incumbents?
It's really a combination of, you know, providing the right value proposition to the population, better better service, better service quality, you know, competitive pricing, but not always lower pricing. I think we've heard from a lot of municipal utilities that they say they want to be, you know, at the existing level, at the existing prices or slightly lower, but also providing a much, much higher level of customer service and experience to the customer. I think when we've worked with other utilities, we hear a lot about the equity that they have in their brand, meaning the trust that their residents and businesses place in them to deliver essential services and making sure that the customer is taken care of, right? We hear a lot about, well, what do we do to take care of the customer? How do we help them get connected to our service? How do we help them use it, utilizing community orientation and training? Right? Being there for the customer has a lot to do with it, and they don't get that experience, like typically, from the, you know, the large incumbents that are out there.
And that level of white glove service is something we think we could offer, even if it was outsourced?
It it's something that all providers have to try to offer. I think we see cities doing a better job of it, because that's a really important part of what they do for their communities, right? Their community first and foremost. So we see a lot of focus being placed on, you know, the back office customer service, making sure that the customer is taken care of over the phone, but also how that translates into things like installations in the customer's home, making sure the customer knows how, like when that that installation contractor leaves, they know how to use everything in their house, right, before what service is established. And then also helping train the customer, right? We see a lot of communities using sort of, you know, community events, town halls as training sessions to help them really understand the service.
Does does the customer service usually involve not just sort of the connection, but Wi Fi in home, Wi Fi access point setup?
Yep. Typically, you'd have, so it would be more of a full home in a full home experience where the utility is actually managing all of the services in the home. And it and it's good for the city to do that, because it allows you to know when there's a problem in that customer's home. Say there's a Wi Fi router down, or there's a TV that's not online anymore. You can actually see when that happens and let the customer know. So it's the customer's aware that it's a problem inside their home and not a problem with the service, right? That's proactive customer management. The technologies that you would potentially deploy in the network would have that capability built in as part of the service. So and you really, you really want to focus on training C S Rs, your customer service agents, how to use that, and also how to troubleshoot inside the customer's home. That goes a long way.
Let's see, one. I'll see if I have time for two more questions. So would the relationship between the city of Palo Alto and an outsourced provider, an outsourced I S P, be similar to the relationship between A T and T and Sonic? Is that a useful analogy?
I I would think of it more like a strategic vendor, where you may have, again, Palo Alto would still be the service provider, but you would have, you know, a vendor that's managing, let's say, all of your tech support.
Got it. All right. And final question. So there's been some discussion of whether starting aerial or starting underground is the right approach, given that sort of inverse relationship between cost of installation and likelihood that the customers are really dying for this service. In an undergrounded area, would it involve trenching on the customer's property to install the service? And in the business model, who bears that cost?
The city would bear the cost. Typically, most, almost all broadband providers bear that cost, and they get the money back in the monthly service fee. But it would involve typically trenching on the on the property.
Thank you.
Thank you. So first, I'd like to ask a follow up question on the take rate assumptions. This range that we have nationally of like thirty five to fifty percent for a a city fiber, have you broken that down by how many competitors there are? If is it a is the fifty percent more when there is only one competitor and thirty five percent when there are two? Or do we not know that?
It really depends on the community. You have some communities like Cedar Falls in Iowa, where you have, you know, one community, one competitor, and they have almost ninety percent take rate in the community, right? Almost nine out of ten households subscribe. You have other areas like Bright Ridge or Johnson City, where they're more in the forties, right? Because they're earlier, they have two competitors in that market. And then you have places like Longmont in Colorado, where you have sort of one main competitor and one smaller competitor, and they're above fifty percent. So it's hard to baseline, because every community and every competitive market is so different. It's hard to baseline it, but as a general rule of thumb, you know, fewer competitors are going to lead to fewer choices and better opportunities for take rate in Palo Alto.
Okay. And then I wanted to follow up on this, the cost assumptions with trenching versus traditional undergrounding. And so you said you used traditional undergrounding techniques as the conservative assumption. So do we have a sense of of what's the range of cost savings that we may see from trench, micro trenching?
It would have to be a, we we think commissioner would have to be a, or mayor, it would need to be a study on Palo Alto's sort of roadways, looking at the existing roadways, understanding what kind of micro trenching could be utilized, if there were good opportunities for that, what the restoration costs would be, and then come up with an estimate of, you know, proposed savings for the areas.
And when you say the restoration costs, is it necessarily so that with conventional trenching, you're going to have a higher restoration cost than the micro trenching? Or is there something I'm not understanding about?
No, the restoration costs could be, they could be as high, they could, I mean, with with the traditional, you'd be looking at directional drilling, lower restoration costs typically with 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 that method. The micro trenching has its own restoration cost, which may be higher or lower, just depending on the particular environment that it's in. Is it in concrete? Is it in asphalt? What are the specific dynamics of the roadway beds that that need to be restored after the micro trenching is completed? So really, a deeper, a deep study on that should really be looked at if we want to consider.
So I appreciate we can't get any numbers tonight, but I'm trying to get a sense on the likelihood that it's going to be a lower cost, at least in some areas of the city. We do have a good portion of older Palo Alto that has concrete streets, and and that may be less conducive to the micro trenching. But we also have a lot of asphalt. And in those areas, is it not reasonable to assume that the micro trenching would be lower cost?
It is. We we could assume that. We just don't know the magnitude of that, that difference. The other, the other thing that's important about that is the overall long term O and M on the micro trenching right now is somewhat of an unknown factor. So we need to look at that and understand if there is a higher O and M on micro trenching, we need to build that into the overall operating cost model.
And I guess I'm surprised, a half dozen or so years ago, when we were looking at this, it was newer, and I had assumed that it was be more mature and better understood, especially in in fiber applications by now.
We we have a micro trenching expert that we actually brought along with us, who's done about a thousand miles of it. So I'm happy. Chris, would you mind coming up and sharing for a minute or two? Do we have time?
Yeah. And even if if we, I'm trying to get at, even if we can't know the number of how much less expensive it would be here, is there some sort of range that we might assume? Hi, welcome.
More than an actual dollar amount. Micro trenching is is, it really depends on the conditions of the ground. It's not a silver bullet, but it can be effective in a lot of areas where, like, say, if you're downtown area, where you you have limited running lines, you don't have the traditional space to do what you need to do, and it's driving up costs, because now you're having to open trench and rest, you know, restore a much larger footprint. So there's definitely a percentage of savings that can be saved. The other thing is speed. It can go very fast. Traditional boring, you know, an average crew can maybe do a thousand feet in a day. With micro trenching, you can easily do four thousand feet a day. But you also have a lot of risk of your network being shallow. So you have the tendency for people to hit it, have potential outages, downtime. But go ahead.
Well, I was just, I'm trying to get at this range of percent. Is it five to ten percent? Is it ten to fifty percent? What kind of ballpark are we in on potential savings?
I don't know what number you feel comfortable with saying, but it can be substantial. As much as fifty percent.
Okay. That's an upper end, and then we we've got a lower end. That kind of gives me some order of magnitude sense of that. Thanks. And then on slide number eight, I don't know if we can call it back up, but we we've had an issue on take rates. And then I think this slide gave us some sense of the geography of of where we might have highest take rates. Then we probably want to look at that and compare that to what Chair Siegel was talking about on on where we have undergrounding, and see where there's overlap and any sweet spots. But then we also have this equity issue. And so I'm trying to remember the areas of the city that have undergrounding and whether we see any correlation between the the deposit results, which I'm construing to be an indicator of take rates. Is that a reasonable assumption?
Okay, we think so, yes.
Yeah. And how that correlates to where we have undergrounding. Director Bachelor, you have a good feel for where we have the undergrounding. I don't know if we can get slide eight up again, but is there, oh, you got it in front of you, too. Do you think that there's any good overlap between those areas so that we we could potentially have low construction costs and high take rates in the beginning?
Mayor Burt, there there is. I mean, I'm looking at at the map. There are some definitely advantages for us on in the, in the underground area where we see, I've seen some of these deposits, these numbers of seven oh three actually getting up to, there's one area I was looking at. There was about two hundred customers that have made deposits that are in the underground area. And as I was speaking to Chair Siegel, it's, you know, we would look at those opportunities as well as looking at the overhead side, where that makes the most sense to start the undergrounding area. So I think that there's a great potential to gain customers in those areas of where the So I think that there's a great potential to gain customers in those areas of where this overlap was.
Okay, thanks. Lastly, we've talked about our competitive advantages. And one of the key ones that gets repeatedly mentioned is superior reliability. So what would be the basis of us being able to offer superior reliability than the existing providers?
So you, you have the opportunity to sort of build the network for, you know, sort of maximizing reliability early, right? Where we, when we look at the way the network would be designed and built, you're building this effectively from scratch. Right? A lot of the existing networks out there have been built over time, over legacies. So there are some inherent flaws and there are, and some inherent limitations that are created by that. You know, when we look at this, for example, the, the POP locations, locations where the electronics surround, all are going to be fully redundant, right? Where we have redundancy there and all the way down into the neighborhood level that, so if, let's say a contractor, you know, tears down a fiber, a car hits a telephone pole, knocks out a fiber, you're still going to have more reliability, you're going to have resilient network to, in redundant route to keep services up to those communities. So that, that's really a design principle that you can only get when you're building networks from scratch and building new. That'll help you really.
Okay. So it's not speculative. It's not because we're just better at stuff. It's because we'd be building it from scratch predominantly. Hopefully we can be better in other ways, but there are certain inherent aspects to building from scratch. Okay, great. Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah. Well, thank you to the UAC and thank you Sista for your, for your work on this. I have a question, which is if we look at Palo Alto and our, let's say, you know, percentage of households that could get a gigabit or higher, how do we compare against, let's say, Mountain View or Millaparque or some other communities? Are we doing better or worse roughly, do you know?
Than your neighboring communities? We haven't looked at that specifically. We know that the providers in Palo Alto offer similar services in those surrounding communities, but we haven't done a deep analysis on, you know, how they stack up in terms of the speeds between communities.
How about, you mentioned like Chattanooga, what about other cities that have done, you know, some sort of open access or have done municipal? Like how does that, how does it compare against, you know, where we are right now?
In terms of the, sort of the position you're in now?
Yeah, in terms of percentage of households that have high speed, it's like, not just high speed, but let's say gigabit and higher.
So, so, so most, most other communities that have built out have a, another dominant provider that's providing gigabit services like Longmont, Colorado, we talked about a little bit. They have Comcast as well. They have gigabit services. Now they have, I think Comcast is providing two and even three gigabit there. Next light, the city of Longmont's broadband utility is providing, I think now up to five gigabit in broadband services. So, you know, they, most of the cities will have a dominant gigabit provider already operating in the community that the city will.
I guess what I'm trying to get at is, I'm just trying to see, like our city, we've been talking about fiber. We've done some, you know, dark fiber backbone, but we haven't actually done to, you know, to the home yet. And I'm just wondering, like, you know, if you take our, our city where we haven't actually done it to the home yet, compared to cities that have done more active steps, you know, are we that much further behind in terms of availability of gigabit ethernet?
To, to other communities?
Yeah.
No, I mean, you, you're really in a position that a lot of utilities have been in where they have already a, a commercial fiber backbone. They have, you know, a backbone that's serving city facilities and all of the city's needs. And now they're extending to the home, like Bright Ridge in Tennessee, right? And they're a little larger in meters than Palo Alto. They're about 60,000 to 70,000 meters. Very similar though, they had been a large fiber backbone supporting the electric utility. And then, you know, they, they took that down to the home about five years ago and have been building since to every home in Johnson City. So, and their competition is, you know, the, the big cable company that is providing that gigabit service.
Yeah, so I'm less, I'm more agnostic as to whether it's provided by the city or provided by a private company. It's more about having the available service to the people, right? And I'm just trying to think of what impact does having a city have a more active presence in providing this? How does that affect the percentage of people that get this high-speed internet?
Oh, I think, I think your question is around, you know, what's the, what's the net effect of the city providing? So what we typically see is lower prices for everyone, right? Meaning because there's a new entrant.
But it's a really lower price because the cities are dumping in, you know, hundreds and hundreds of dollars into the program. So you gotta look at the total cost, not just what the people pay. I mean, the individual consumer, but also what the city pays because there's a really total lower cost if.
Well, it's, it's sort of a triple net, right? We think about that in terms of, yeah, the city has to finance that, the citizen has to pay. But if the overall cost is lower for the citizen in paying to cover the debt service and the operating.
As long as you factor in the cost that the city put in as well, right? But if you don't factor that in, then it's not a fair comparison.
Right. But the, the revenues from the, so the revenues from the consumer are paying all the costs, right, for the service. So if those revenues from the consumer are lower than what they're paying in the market today and that's covering all the costs the city needs to finance the network, operate, manage, that, that triple net impact is a lower cost for the community. And sort of an add-on impact of if it, that, that competition also reduces the cost of the existing services from other providers, they also get the net benefit of it. So we've seen it that, that way and, and, you know, that, that creates a sort of community-wide benefit.
Okay.
Even for consumers or even.
So you're saying even after factoring in the cost that the city puts in, like staff time, right? Something that it's, it's still, it's still, it's still a net benefit.
It would have to be, because all those have to go into the over, all of those costs need to go into the price of the service, right? So the cities, what the city's charging has to be able to cover all of those costs. So as long as that's happening and long-term, the city's at least breaking even, then if those prices are lower than the market, then the community is saving money.
Yeah, because.
Does that make sense?
I, I think so. I, I mean, the, the thing I was just thinking about when I looked at the, you know, possible pricing that the city would offer is that it's not much better than what I would get today. I mean, I can get gigabit ethernet now at Comcast. I can't get it from AT&amp;T if I could get it from Comcast. But for me, I actually do both, right? Just because, not because, mainly because of reliability. Because if one goes out, I have the other one. So that's the main reason why I have it right now. But I just wonder, and I think someone earlier mentioned it, is, you know, I wonder if we're too late on this, right? And whether the city can move fast enough and differentiate enough to, to, you know, really have a big an effect, right? Whether we're going to be kind of lagging behind on the technology and if there's a sufficient differentiation that we could have in the market. And so, or, or should we maybe more partner with people, go more outsourced? Or maybe just provide incentives for the existing providers to have a certain coverage rate or some sort of reliability bonus or something where we create more competition versus try to compete ourselves? Because I just wonder whether, whether, you know, if we'd done it 10 years ago or 20 years ago, then that's, I think it's a different story, but we're doing it today. And some of the, if I look at this as a consumer point of view, it doesn't seem as compelling even like five years ago, 10 years ago, right? 10 years ago had been amazing. But now I look at it and go, God, I could get that right now almost, right? And so that's, that's what I'm worried about.
Well, and, and that really, when you think about the prices that are, that are up there, right? Those are starting prices and those are standard prices. So, you know, with the 95% of the existing providers offering promotional prices.
Yeah, but the prices also go down, right? I mean, they're going down and then there's going to be the 5G people coming in and there's going to be more of a competition. So I just, I just worry about, can we move fast enough? Can we be competitive enough? Or should we be more in the game of providing incentives for more competition? And to remove barriers from, like trying to make it easy to get permitting to deploy the services, right? And, and, or the conduits or whatever it takes to make it easy for people to compete versus trying to get into the game ourselves. I just wonder whether we can move fast enough. That's my concern.
Sure. I think that's a philosophical question, like.
I don't think it has to be philosophical. I think we could actually look at, you know, where other people are and where we are. So I don't think it's necessarily philosophical, but that's why I was asking you these questions.
Sure.
But thank you.
So we were planning to go to the public and then come back for the second half and discussions. Do you have a quick question, Councilmember? Okay. So why don't we go ahead and go to the public at this time? And then we'll reconvene for the second half of the meeting, which is the council portion. Okay. So let's see how many speakers we have. Edit. All right. We'll go ahead and allow up to three minutes per speaker. Our first speaker is Jeff Hoyle and welcome to be followed by Aram James.
Thanks. I'm, I, I sent you a list of my questions, which is a very long list and I don't propose to go over it again. But I'm, I'm pleased that you're asking the questions that will allow you to answer whether you want to go forward with this or not. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Aram James to be followed by Hamilton Hitchens. Welcome.
Okay. Well, maybe there's another Aram James, but I'm on there twice. I think that's probably an error. So I'll speak.
We'll only let you speak once.
I appreciate, I appreciate that, particularly on the subject. It's one I've never tried to jump into before. You know, very interesting conversation, but somebody said this is not speculative. And I'm thinking, whoa, with all the variables that are discussed, I can't imagine something that's more speculative. I think you'd have to really do the deep dive that Greg Tanaka's done and others have done to, you know, get another city that has similar in its population, its demographics, and then all of this digging that's going to take place. And I think Dave Price raised a, a good point today in his editorial about the city trying to run businesses when we've got, you know, all of these, I, I understand what, it was somewhat of a different scenario, but a gym, you know, a, a public gymnasium versus competitors. But here I've got, also got the concern about outsourcing. I think we would want to in-source, you know, when we deal with stuff like climate change, why would we want to have people coming from outside town, driving in here with the climate change issues? Why not give those jobs to people that live in Palo Alto? Give them, and then there's another question here is, what kind of wages are the, the people that are going to be working, hopefully in-sourced? And I would imagine it's got to be wages that are, that are a livable wage. So I'd like to hear something about that and on, on the questions. And then, I, I mean, Greg, Greg Tanaka raises great, it seems to me like if this had been done 20 years ago, yeah, but now the technology is moving so quickly. We have climate change. We have, you know, sea level possibly rising with underground cables. So I, I just think it's, it's a very, very speculative proposition. So I'm glad all of you are asking lots of questions and I'm going to do my best to hang in there to hear all the other people that council members make your, your brilliant questions and comments and see where all this, this, this comes out. But it sounds to me, ultimately, the other thing is if you're going to be investing a hundred million or $50 million worth of city money upfront with all the other needs that we, that should be prioritized, making certain that every unhoused person in Santa Clara County and certainly Palo Alto is housed, should we be putting this kind of money into a service that's already provided by lots of competitors? I would think not. We also need more psychiatric social workers. We, we've got a lot of things that come as a priority here over this undergrounding. That's my perspective with how having the, the, the education base that a lot of the council members have. But I'm going to keep listening and keep an open mind. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And before proceeding to our next speaker, I just want to note that I see Commissioner Smith has a hand up and I'll go to him after hearing from members of the public before we end this, end this portion. Hamilton Hitchens to be followed by Herb Borack. Welcome.
Because Comcast is already provides ubiquitous high-speed internet access to all of Palo Alto today. The value proposition for city residential fiber is primarily ensuring there is competition. However, AT&amp;T started the rollout of true fiber to the home a couple of years ago in Palo Alto. If you use Sonic, Sonic will layer outstanding customer service on top of that for the same price. AT&amp;T is almost the same as the city's proposed fiber rates, except with AT&amp;T, it's $5 more expensive on the lowest tier and much cheaper for the fastest two and five gig in their upcoming offerings. Anyone who is satisfied with Comcast can switch to AT&amp;T fiber or Sonic today, provided it is offered to their home. Thus, the real question is what is the percentage of city homes will AT&amp;T fiber offer coverage to in three years' time? This rollout's going to take four years and won't start for at least a year and a half. Our staff claims that currently only 25% of Palo Alto is covered by AT&amp;T fiber, but they don't actually know. They also claim AT&amp;T is primarily installing fiber at home served by overhead lines. In Palo Alto, 90% of the homes are served by overhead lines. Again, in Palo Alto, 90% of the residents are served by overhead lines. Thus, you can infer AT&amp;T is easily able to reach 90% of the city's population. Magellan estimates take rates and financial estimates do not account for this. And I don't believe they've even accurately account for AT&amp;T's existing fiber customers who are very unlikely to switch. The modeling by Magellan assumes a 30% conversion rate of users switching to the city's fiber from the existing providers. This would be reasonable if the Comcast was the only provider, but because of AT&amp;T fiber, the 30% conversion rate seems overly optimistic to me. In the city survey, 7% said they were very satisfied and 22% said they were somewhat satisfied. The modeling by Magellan assumes all of these users switched to city fiber and none of them to AT&amp;T. And that just gets you to 30%. They're talking about 35 to 40, to 50%. Furthermore, almost half the existing users have another bundled service such as phone or cable. This will further reduce conversion rates for customers. Thus, it's important to truly understand what percentage of city homes will AT&amp;T fiber offer coverage to in three years' time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Herb Borack to be followed by Bob Smith. Welcome.
Mayor Bird, Chair Segal, council members and commissioners. I sent you a letter with some questions and I have some, some more after reading the report in more detail. I, I believe what's been proposed is that the dark fiber fund be changed from the, funded as both the dark fiber and the lit fiber. I, I prefer having something set up separately as a customer of the dark fiber as the way to do fiber to the premises. I've also raised the question of what kind of optronics are being used? If it's G-PON or point to multi-point, that assumes over-subscription and there won't be congestion because people use their, their fiber at different times. The alternative is active ethernet point-to-point, which I prefer. The Magellan proposes putting a, a fiber hut in, in One Embryoni's Park, which is dedicated parkland. And I know we've had, and that requires a vote of the people to remove from, from parkland. In terms of the kind of internet service provided to have, there are experienced outside providers that we can hire who have a reputation for excellent customer service and who don't do data mining for the purposes of ad targeting or surveillance of subscribers. You just had a closed session on your labor negotiations. Recently, the Utilities Advisory Commission was advised of how many vacancies there are in the existing utility functions. And so I don't see the, the wisdom of, of starting something new here. I, I would prefer a clear, broken-down spreadsheets on the capital forecasting versus the operating budget. You know, in the city, we have both an operating budget and a capital budget. And also there's money supposedly coming from at least the electric utility of which there are estimates. And those things apparently depend upon how many of the fiber strands in each of the back, backbone and the fiber project are used by, by the utilities versus, for example, used by the fiber project. for example, used by the fiber project. And other than the percentage of money, we don't see the, you know, the actual fiber count on those. I don't think it's much of a benefit to say that we spend a lot of money on this project. We should be happy if the incumbents lower their prices. I don't think that that's a way to get any kind of benefit. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bob Smith, to be followed by our final speaker, Andy Pogio. Welcome.
Good evening. Municipal broadband for this community is an unnecessary risk. Think of it this way. If you build it, and it works, and you make money, a little bit like your plan is, doesn't really help anybody? Or will the incumbents, by the time you build yours, have theirs working as well or better than it, than it already does, and it won't be something you notice? On the other hand, if you try to build it and fail, well, that's a $130 million investment that's sitting there, probably a lot more by the time you get it done. And if you look at cities like Provo, Utah, that tried it and failed, it was a misery. I don't see the point. I followed these meetings for 40 years here in this, in this room. And each time, we have new meetings about fiber. It's less appropriate. It's less necessary. I realized this last summer when AT&amp;T came along and wired my house. Take this off. Having a hard time talking. I know I have AT&amp;T and Comcast, so I can at least compare them. They both work, kind of. Let's look at a priority that you're not doing much about, as far as I can tell. And that's the city's electrical grid. There was some mention of it tonight. As we look forward to end of gas and electrical vehicles, we're going to need a lot more power in this community, and I don't see us doing much to make that happen. In fact, talk about reliability, Mr. Mayor. The electrical system here has been a fright in the last several months, and people are saying the city is not running a reliable system. I'm saying it, and I'm hearing other people say it too. That would be something to work on. Of course, you can also pick housing, transportation, the railroad changes that are necessary. I don't understand why you're here talking about fiber. Go home and watch Comcast, you know? It works. Fiber works from AT&amp;T. A lot of the concerns about fiber not working or Comcast not working really have to do with the fact that you have a huge system out there for the internet, and a lot of the individual sites occasionally have problems. And then people say, oh, Comcast isn't working again. Well, I don't know. I wish you luck.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Andy Pogio. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. I just have three points I'd like to make. First one is there was concern about fiber technology obsolescence, in particular 5G. 5G still has significant drawbacks. If you want fast 5G, it doesn't work well with precipitation, like rain. Doesn't work well with foliage. We may not have too much rain, but we have lots of foliage. High-speed 5G and foliage don't work well together. In addition, usually 5G is a shared medium because it's broadcast. That means lower individual bandwidth at times when internet use is possible. So if you notice, 3G towers didn't use 3G for the back hall, they used fiber. 4G towers, same thing. 5G towers, they're not using 5G for the back hall. They're using fiber. The reason is, is fiber is reliable and fast. That's point one. Point two is, because there was some perhaps misinformation. AT&amp;T is doing underground fiber in Palo Alto. I live in Midtown. My neighborhood is all underground utilities. Within the last 12 months, AT&amp;T Fiber's been offered, and I'm using it. Works okay. So, so that may not be such an opportunity. There may not necessarily be, if the utilities are undergrounded, there's no fiber available. That's certainly not the case in my neighborhood. I can't speak for others. The last point Bob Smith touched on, I want to just expand on that a little bit. So as many of you know, including some of the current council members, I've long been a fiber to the premises proponent for Palo Alto. I still think it's a good idea, but things have changed. In, in particular, now I can get fiber at home, not from an ideal provider, but sort of an okay one. But there are other opportunities, and I think one is mandatory for us, and that's city electrification. Right? We're going to have to outlaw natural gas, only electric stoves, heat pumps for heating, heat pumps for hot water, only electric cars. This is coming, and we have to support it. So I would really like to see numbers projecting, here's, here's what Palo Alto's future electricity needs will be. Here's the kind of capital investment we need to meet those needs. And see if we can do both electrification and fiber to the premises. Great. That's the ideal outcome in my mind. I love to see that happen. But if it's a choice of one or the other, I think we have to do electrification. So I'd really like to see that plan and those numbers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I see that we have Commissioner Smith, who wishes to speak, and go right ahead.
Thank you very much, Mayor Pat Bird. I appreciate that. City Council, lovely to be here this evening. The UAC fellow commissioners, as well as city staff, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. As many of you know, I've worked on this particular subject for some time. First, with the Citizens Advisory Committee that was essentially sunsetted when fiber and the discussion of fiber was rolled into UAC's purview. So I've been very, very close for a number of years, and I've been watching it. And I have a number of comments that I'd just like to make. First of all, a small little anecdote. There was Slide 8 was, was brought up in the questioning during the period. And Slide 8 was a beautiful slide, primarily because it basically shows where those people we assume are most interested in fiber to the home have put down a deposit. And there's a couple of areas there that are dark blue. I happen to live in one of those dark blue areas. What's interesting about those dark blue areas, that is greater than 15 per, per, I think the, I, I fail to remember the fiber metric, but it was greater than 15 got dark blue. What's interesting about that, and then one of those two areas happens to me, my area, and AT&amp;T Fiber actually is offered in my area. So I signed up because I'm desperate for fiber and regular connectivity. We had an appointment last Thursday. No one showed up. My wife called AT&amp;T. And I, anecdotally, this is exactly what was the response was. Sorry, we're a month out from delivering service. Small little anecdote about the delivery quality that's available through AT&amp;T. There are problems. It is available. It's not available to everyone. The other, the other important fact that I'd like to bring to everyone's attention, and certainly to this city council, is that there are two components of fiber. There's dark fiber, and there's fiber to the home. And their dark fiber, there's a significant portion of that dark fiber that is necessary for our future. We are talking about, and we are going to implement AMI. And that is advanced metering infrastructure for our infrastructure, for our Department of Utilities. All of that is run on our fiber. In order to implement AMI in our city, we need to improve our fiber. A significant portion of the costs that you're, you're reading about in the reports tonight are associated with AMI. Fiber to the home is but one extension of the ask. The other thing that I'd like to highlight is there was a comment made earlier about bundling, that bundling became suddenly so important. What was interesting about the survey results is that survey results actually show that most, that literally 50%, I think it was greater than 50%, have already cut the cord. Most of us are using Hulu or Netflix or some other third-party's content provider. Another comment I'd like to make is on timing. There were a number of questions about, is this the correct timing? To that, I'd like to answer that almost financially. We have a $32 million war chest that has been accumulated over 20 years, actually greater than 20 million, 20 years. That $32 million war chest has been put aside for development of dark fiber and potentially AMI and potentially fiber to the home. The shortage of 86 million that's been highlighted in your, in your packets this evening is easily made up, as we've demonstrated in our memo, via a revenue bond. The interesting thing about a revenue bond, the bond, the payments against the bond are funded by the revenues of the network. They're not taxes. We're not talking taxes to anyone. We're not talking about increasing spending for the city of Palo Alto. We're talking about paying for the fiber network via the revenues the fiber network generates. The, one final thing on that is, and there is a concern about this. That's why the Subcommittee from the UAC actually asked the city treasurer this specific question. Does our rollout of fiber to the home affect our ability in any way financially to raise money to fix or upgrade our electrical utility grid? And the answer was, it is a revenue bond. A revenue bond that is paid for by the revenues of the fiber network. In other words, they are not related. As we heard tonight from Dean and our Director of Utilities, we know that they are related, but they are related from the perspective of the physical work. And that is logical. If we need to upgrade our electrical grid, then let's go ahead and do the fiber. If we're going to do fiber, let's go ahead and do the electrical. That is logical work. Finally, and I think this is one of the things, there's, sorry, not finally. There's two final points that I'd like to, like to make. The first is this. If I am offered 1 gigabit service up and down from AT&amp;T, and it works perfectly fine, I'm, I'm very happy. I've got 1 gigabit service up and down. I'm very happy. I'm not dropping, and my wife, my son, I can be at work, my wife can be at work, and my son can be at school. I'm very, very happy. If I can do that and pay the city of Palo Alto, knowing that the $80 a month that I spend for that 1 gigabit service up and down goes to the city of Palo Alto and to payment for the fiber fund and potentially for improvement of the fiber fund and for potentially reducing the cost of my fiber from 80 to 10, as they've demonstrated, a 10% savings or a $15 million savings over 10 years equates to $560 per household over that 10-year period. That's a chunk of money. I'm going to be interested, but more importantly, I'm doing something for my community, and I'm benefiting my own community and my neighbors. I'm bringing down the cost of fiber. Secondly, I'm also forcing my competitors to also bring down and maybe, maybe be more competitive. That's very compelling for us moving forward. Finally, I'd like us all to reflect back over the last two and a half years. COVID-19 decimated our ability to actually function as a society. We couldn't go to school. We couldn't work. And our entire communities were locked down in our single-family residences. That was painful. Making that somewhat easier by providing fiber and reliable downstream, upstream service via fiber will make our citizens that much happier. And God willing, we don't have another COVID crisis. We are prepared. But more importantly, we are providing a provision for our future generations that they will be prepared when we weren't. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see hands from other commissioners. Is that correct, that they are taking to speak? Okay, and so before breaking up this session, Commissioner Phil Seth, did you have a follow-up question?
Well, I was going to continue the discussion. Are we going to take a break or something like that?
Yeah, we're, we're going to take a break, and then it's scheduled that we'll have a council reconvening in the second half.
Always last the break.
Okay. All right. So I think that concludes this first half of the study session, and I want to thank everyone. It's been a pleasure having the commission here and on this simple subject. And, and so we look forward to additional discussions. Thanks. And we'll return in 10 minutes at 5 minutes tonight. And we'll return in 10 minutes at five minutes tonight. So now we're going to head into the next session, segment of this study session, which is a council session covering financial sensitivity analysis, financing, financing options, organizational structures, and then some additional discussion on kind of how things may all fit together. So Director Bachelor, were you kicking off this next section or how do we go?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Burke. So we're just going to continue on with John making a presentation and staff will fill in when needed.
Can I interrupt for just one second? We were talking, it's been so long. I think some of the council members weren't even here. I think the last time we had a fiber update, so maybe even just getting a little bit of an introduction would be helpful for some.
Just a, just general introduction on the fiber project.
About who Magellan is.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We're happy to. So, yep, for those who we haven't met with before, John Honker with Magellan. Magellan, we, we're a broadband consulting engineering firm. We've been around since 2004 and we've worked with about 400 cities, utilities, local governments that have decided to build some type of fiber network. And we're really sort of, again, engineering consulting and we help cities get to the point where, you know, they're ready to build. We've, and Palo Alto now, we've gotten you to the point where you'll have full blueprints and engineering designs for the proposed fiber to the home network. It was part of our tasking with the city as well as the business plan, the market analysis and the financial plan, cost analysis. So, you know, we work throughout the country, lot in California. We have about 50 municipal and municipal utility clients in California, but we work throughout the country as well. So happy to answer any specific questions on the company, but it's just a little bit of background on us. Moving into the presentation, this, this part of the presentation really focuses on the financial aspects of the proposed fiber to the home network. The goal here was really to help city council and the UAC understand, you know, overall costs for the fiber to the home network, fiber to the premise network and, you know, potentially looking at overall financials for, for the proposed broadband business and what drives, you know, financial performance for the, the system. Next slide, please. So we'll cover just some very high level financials right now, but please, as we go through this, we'll, we'll dive a little bit deeper in and, and I'll try to get through these slides in 10, 10, 12 minutes. Then we'll open it up for questions from the UAC and council. Next slide, please. As we looked at the original costs for fiber to the premise from last year, we were looking at about $128 million, $120.8 million for the entire project. And that was broken down into two components. One, the fiber backbone and two, the fiber to the premises network. So when we think about the fiber backbone, again, we're talking about the enhancement of the city's existing fiber network to support the utility, to support city departments, also to support commercial dark fiber leasing. The cost of that's about 22 million with the bulk of it, the remaining being fiber to the premise, which is effectively, you know, a couple hundred miles of fiber that's laid throughout the city to provide broadband homes and businesses. So that, that in 2021 was 86 million. And we also set aside about 12 and a half million dollars for working capital. Now, what is working capital? Working capital is really all of the funding that's needed to start the fiber to the premise business before revenues exceed costs. So for example, no matter what business model you pick, you're going to have to spend money on staff, contracts, vendors, stuff to get the business, to get the broadband utility off the ground before you have customers. We have to train FTEs, we have to have systems in place, we have to have staff in place to be able to support the fiber to the home network. As you're doing that, right, we need some operational funding to support that. That 12 and a half million supports the fiber to the home operating costs for the first few years as revenues are generated on the network and before those revenues are high enough to, to pay for costs. So adding those three together, we were at 128 million. Our current estimates have gone up. Supply chain issues, demand in the broadband business has gone significantly higher than it was last year. We, we see considerable inflation in prices on materials and to a lesser degree labor. Those costs now have gone from originally 128.8 million to about 143 million, so up a bit from last year. We've also increased the working capital set aside from 12 and a half million to 15 million because we realize that labor costs have also gone up and we want to project the increases in labor costs going forward in the first few years of the network to cover that additional expense load. So how would that be funded? The first thing to take out of those numbers is the joint savings if the two networks are built together. So if you think about the fiber backbone and the fiber to the home network, there's a lot of places where they overlap and wherever they overlap, there's an opportunity to put that fiber in the same trench, meaning we don't have to dig two trenches for each network. We can use that same trench as long as it's on that, on that road. So we did an engineering analysis to determine what that cost savings would be if they were both built together. And we're looking at about 11 million there. So it's significant, right? And that would, would bring down the overall cost of the network by that 11 million. The existing fiber fund that would, would be utilized to bring down the cost of new debt by 34 million and the remaining would be about 98 million in new borrowings or new funding required by the city. The allocation of that, again, we talked about electric using a portion of that network and costs, a portion of the cost would be allocated towards electric. So we're looking at between 13 and 18 million that would be funded by electric to support the fiber network for their portion of it that would be used. And then the remainder would be allocated, you know, directly to the fiber utility with about 80 to 85 million. So, you know, 98 million in new funding, you know, less those, with that, with that allocation between fiber and electric. As we look at the, the financial plan, we looked at different business models and how they would perform under these funding scenarios. So looking at the total costs of the network. So looking at the total costs of the network and what our cash balances would be at the end of the year in each of the in-source, hybrid, and outsource models. What's important about these graphs is that the lines always stay above zero, right? The goal is, in any of the financial models, any of the operating models that we're looking at, we need to keep our cash balances above zero every year that the fiber utility is operating. And in these cases, three scenarios we looked at do, there's some contingency built into this as well, given the fact that costs have risen over the past year. But what's important for you to look at in these numbers is the slope of the lines, right? As we look at in-source, hybrid, and outsource model, they all carry a cash balance above zero for the period of time and they also maintain a similar slope in each one of their curves, meaning that their costs are overall linear comparing the three models. Outsource, you know, creates the highest opportunity for cash flow, meaning the lowest cost for the city, fund balances are higher, followed by the hybrid model, followed by the in-source model. So in effect, what we're saying is that the city can operate at lower costs if it's outsourcing versus insourcing. And that's primarily a function of the higher overheads on labor that the city carries as part of its employment. So, again, what's important though is to, because of the slopes of these curves, the models are relatively similar, so there doesn't have to be a definitive in-source versus outsource option. You can look at variations of this and you can also look at variations over time, depending on the needs of the business, right? This, the business will drive the overall performance of the network and the performance, the financial performance. So it's important to remember that that can be flexible over time, meaning if the city decides in the first few years of building its network that it wants to outsource a number of the functions because maybe it doesn't have the capability today or it can't ramp up fast enough. That's a way to keep costs down and also introduce those capabilities quickly, which could be outsourced over time, right? We see a lot of cities moving through the first three or four years of construction and operation to a point with their outsourced partners, but bringing those in-house over time, right? Once the take rates are achieved, once the network is mature, you know, starting to internalize some of those opportunities, some of those business functions, and then using less outsourcing. Decision on the final model really will be based on, will be based on just understanding of sort of quality, right? Cost and control, right? As you utilize outsourced vendors, we do lose some control. We can contract with quality vendors to provide good services, but it may be different than what the city is providing internally. And we need to make sure that whatever the city does, it's up to the standards of the community. Next slide, please. Sensitivity analysis. So again, you remember that financials only provide us one snapshot of one set of scenarios at one point in time. So as we go through this analysis, sensitivity and variable analysis is really important to understand what are the most sensitive factors that drive the financial performance or financial erosion if they go negative. Next slide, please. As we look at this and we've gone through a sensitivity analysis of about 12 different key variables, construction costs, operating costs, payroll overheads, take rates, pricing, discounts, promotions, everything that goes into the broadband business and changes financial results needs to really be modeled in the financial scenarios. This is probably the most impactful one as a number of commissioners and council members have said tonight, take rates are everything, right? So what this slide shows is what our take rates look like or our financial performance looks like at varied take rates from 15%, which would be catastrophic, frankly. It would be a very bad situation if the city could only achieve 15% take rate and highly unlikely, all the way up to 50%, which would be very positive, right? And we can see, you know, as we're at 15, 20, and 25% marks, our cash balances each year, you can see the slope of those curves are negative and either go positive or stay negative. So we talked about the break-even take rate being between 27 and 30%. You can see in those lower take rates, which are shown in sort of orange, red, and yellow, those lower take rates, 15, 20, and 25, our cash balances are below zero each year. So we're going to have to be adding funds to the network each year, right? And that's not a position the city wants to be to have to continue to add funds to the fiber fund each year. So this is just one scenario. Again, as we work through the final financial plans over the coming weeks, you'll see more financial analysis, more sensitivity analysis. But again, just this helps reinforce how important those take rates are for the business. Financing options. We met with the city finance team to understand what opportunities were out there and how the $85, $86 million would actually be financed. Option one would be, you know, utilizing the fiber reserve with a revenue bond, right? So the revenue bond, about $98 million, which would have a debt repayment or an annual debt service of between $6 and $6.5 million a year. And that's over a 30-year term. So we looked at that with finance. This also assumes a build-out of five years. So the city would be deploying about 20% of the network a year, be at a mature take rate at about year six, once the network was fully deployed. The other option was looking at a way to deploy the network without taking on any new debt. Is there a way that the network could be built without a new bond, new revenue bond or otherwise? The $34 million in the fiber reserves could still be applied to that and it would be effectively a slow roll. That $34 million would be put forth towards the first areas of construction in the city and the rest of the network would be built out over time. The concept would be to utilize the $34 million as effectively seed capital. And once that area started to generate free cash flow or excess revenues, those would be plowed back into the system to build out more of the network. So effectively financing the expansion through revenues rather than debt. And because revenues take time to accrue, it will take time to build out new areas. So, for example, you may not be able to build the next area beyond that $34 million until you're five or six, until there's enough cash that the system is throwing off to start reinvesting in that area. So as we looked at that, that was about a 15-year build-out. Again, debt-free, right? Because it's using the system revenues to generate new capital expansion, but much longer timeframe and a much slower build-out. The last section that we reviewed, project team spent time on, was the organizational structure, right? This really gets into a little bit more than the business models and really looks at, you know, what are the, what is the right organizational structure? What is the right framework for the city to be managing the utility? Next slide, please. And the goal here was to identify ways that the city could potentially alleviate some of its constraints, maybe around procurement or around decision-making to ensure that the broadband business had a flexible, let's say the broadband business could compete in the marketplace, right? Competition requires fast, quick decision-making, quick response to rates, to promotions, to customer service, and is the city's organizational structure set up for that? So we looked, the project team looked at, you know, the city-owned and operated model, which is typical and which is the most common across municipal utilities that have built fiber networks. But there are also some additional ones looked at as alternatives such as joint power authorities, nonprofits, and then, you know, more public-private partnerships with a partner ISP that is, you know, a separate entity away from the city. And the goal was to really understand whether there were other opportunities or other organizational structures that would give the city more flexibility with, you know, a better orientation in the competitive environment. And those four were evaluated. I think some of the conclusions from that analysis were that the city's existing structure could be utilized without, you know, any significant changes to support the needs of the broadband business. There were constraints in the other organizational structures that made them less than optimal for the city. So among the project team, those were the four that were evaluated. Jumping into the Q and A, any questions? Or can we open it up to questions and answers from city council and the UAC?
Thank you. So let's go ahead and for this go-round, focus, try to focus questions primarily on the financial aspects, although there's clearly an intersect between a number of these. Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor Burt. Okay, so using the slide 22 and going all the way out to 2042, in all three scenarios, we have between 40 and 60 million. What exactly should, in the event that that materialized, we chose to do it and materialize? What should we be thinking about those funds? Are those things we need to set aside for replacement costs? Like what are the value of those funds at that level and how should we be thinking about them?
The, in terms of the, can we go back to that slide?
Is the cash flow?
Yeah.
Which slide number was that, councilmember?
22.
22, thank you.
22, yeah, there we go. So as far as this, this cash balance, this is, this is what we sort of call an all-in or a net cash balance, meaning that the cash remaining here is net of debt service, renewal and replacement, and any reserves that are built into the network.
So it's net of replacement?
Net of replacement.
Okay, so it's available.
Right, yeah, we would normally typically call this a free cash flow schedule.
What do other municipalities do when they have excess funds?
We see most, a number of municipal utilities having excess cash flow on their, on their networks.
And what do they do with those funds?
Typically reinvest them back into the network for expansion. We see a lot of that. We see some general fund transfers in states that allow general fund transfers. And we also see if there are loans to the electric utility for other municipal utilities that are doing intra-fund loans repayment of that, of that debt to the, to the primary utility.
Well, next time we look at this, I think we need to have some understanding of, you know, what uses we would expect for those funds and why. So I'm super concerned about competition and I can, I'm glad that you've rated it so highly as a risk. How, how do you expect incumbents to compete in the event that we go ahead and implement this business model? What kind of behaviors have you seen elsewhere?
So typically, we would classify those as sort of prior to construction or prior to deployment and post.
So that would include the truck I've seen that has blue on either side from AT&amp;T saying, we'll pay you to switch, that's driving up and down Alma, is that?
Yeah, so we would actually, typically that's, they're going to do that no matter what. They're going to continue to try to lock customers into long-term contracts. They will sign up as many as they can as quickly as they can. And they may even accelerate some of their deployment schedule in the areas where they see it. So if they have a three-year deployment schedule into Palo Alto, they may decide to accelerate some of those areas to get ahead of the potential risk of Palo Alto coming into the market. On the front end, we would see, you know, as much, you know, challenges from the existing providers, you know, in the form of, you know, trying to slow down the project politically, right? Lobbying, you know, the council, UAC, trying to influence decision-making. Once the project is green-lighted and is moving forward, it's really about, one, marketing and remarketing to their customers, trying to entrench, sign them up for long-term contracts, offering additional promotions, extending the timeframe for promotions, lowering rates to some degree, although we don't typically see a significant reduction in rates.
That's helpful.
Those are just some of the tactics that we've seen.
Okay, because I've certainly heard people say, you know, well, you know, they could just lower the rates and just sit there for a couple of years. It wouldn't, you know, they'd be fine with that. So it's, I'm glad to hear you talk about that. I presume that, you know, municipalities going into fiber hasn't worked everywhere in the country. So what have you learned from the failures elsewhere? What are, what are some of the financial risks that might occur?
Yeah, we've, I mean, we've seen a number of business risks. Leadership, picking the right leadership to manage the utility and providing the right powers to that leadership, ensuring that leadership of the broadband utility has the authority to make decisions based on the needs of the business, trying to keep politics out of that to some degree, making sure that there's quality managers who have the experience in the telecommunications business. And so hiring and staffing is critical. Another aspect is looking at existing city policies in terms of permitting and construction, making sure there are not unnecessary delays there or unnecessary obstacles that would allow the city to, you know, efficiently build the network. Those are, those are two large ones that you should consider how Palo Alto gets ahead of as, as, you know, you consider the overall network deployment. Those are two very large and important ones.
Okay, thank you. I'll look forward to a more general conversation when the time comes.
Councilmember DuBois.
Stone. Yep, thank you. A few more questions and you were talking, just a quick follow-up. You're talking about the possibility of the transfer to the general fund with those excess funds. I guess turning to the city attorney's office, we've obviously had issues with our utility transfers in the past. Do you foresee problems here, being able to transfer excess funds into the general fund in the future?
I'm sorry, can you say that one more time so I get it right?
So we're discussing the possibility of excess funds from this, being able to be possibly transferred to the general fund in addition to being, to being reinvested back into the program. But we've had issues with that under state law. Do you foresee any problems in the future, being able to do something similar with, with these excess funds?
So the law in this area is somewhat different than the gas and electric transfer and it is also evolving. So we'll take a look at it and work closely with the staff over time, so.
Great, I think that'd be helpful for the future discussions. Does, so back to Magellan, sorry, your name one more time, John, John, thanks, John, sorry. Does your take rate analysis consider the significant growth that the city is anticipating to see in housing and in particular, multi-unit housing over the next 10 years? And we're hoping to construct over 6,000 units in the next 10 years. How has that been considered in your analysis?
We did, we utilized the MSA take rate for, for the local MSA, which I believe is Palo Alto, Menlo, and Mountain View. So that was factored into the growth in housing and, which is factored into the take rate effectively.
Great, thanks. And earlier I asked about the digital divide and something I'm kind of related to. Have you seen a discrepancy in your polling of customer satisfaction within multi-housing units compared to, to customers in single-family homes?
Not, no, no specific trend in multifamily versus single-family.
And is that true in other cities as well or is that?
You know, we would, we would think it's very case by case, right? Because some multifamilies are very, very well-served and, you know, all are 100% fiber to all units. Others are highly underserved, right? With kind of decrep- Others are highly underserved, right, with kind of decrepit broadband services. So it's really case by case based on the MDU and the community.
Okay, thank you.
All right, don't see lights, so I'll ask a couple of questions. Our current fiber fund, what, how much cash has it been spinning off last three years or so?
Mayor Burt, I'm sorry, did you say how much we spent over the last three years?
Spinning off, how much is going into the fund revenues ahead of expenses?
It's about two, two and a half million dollars on a given year.
And, and then on the, the bond that we have, where we can project that we'll have the ability to pay that off, off the revenue. But if revenue falls short, does that go to the general fund to be picked up or utility fund, or how does that get paid for?
Well, I think the thing is, is that if we were going to use the electric fund to back this project, then from what we've talked to the Treasury Group about is that those funds would actually have to come out of the electric fund. Because if, if we used it now, if we, if we were going to do something from a, you know, from a city's perspective, then of course, then it would have to come out of the general fund. But we would, we would look at, on the electric side.
So if it's the electric fund that would back the bond, is, would this essentially be under the electric enterprise? And then if there are profits in the future, that's where those dollars would stay?
Mayor, I think with the electric utility, apologies, Kylie Nozay Administrative Services Department, Dean and Molly can correct me if I'm wrong. To the extent the, the electric fund benefited from the investment, from the funds that were issued from the bond, so let's say we were putting in conduit in or doing a trench that we were undergrounding both electric and putting in fiber, we could look at that liability and allocate appropriately some piece of it to the electric fund. But unless the electric rate payers are benefiting from whatever the investment was, the general fund would be your end stop if we were to default on it.
Okay, so then flipping that around, if we make profit from it, who gets the profit?
So, so these are all very complicated and important questions. And I'm sorry to do this, but I'm, I'm going to kind of punt on some of them. And, and we'll have to work and dig down on this. And also we'll need to let you know that this area of the law is changing, both through judicial decisions and potentially through new legislation. So there may be measures on the ballot that will change the way that, the amount of flexibility that the city may have today, but during a time period that's relevant for this activity.
And our, our current fiber fund, I had for a long while thought that those dollars had to stay into that, in that fund and could only be used for additional fiber purposes like this. But I think in the last year or so during budget discussions, it became clarified that those were not restricted funds. Is that correct?
So a few years ago, we did look at this and advised that we felt the city had more flexibility than strictly limiting the use of those funds to the fiber activity. But in the, in the very recent period, a couple of months actually, there's been a new court of appeal decision that does raise some questions about this whole area of analysis. So we are continuing to look at it.
Okay. And I, I do want to note that, you know, there's been a lot of, we have this question of, will this be successful? And we, we don't know for sure. The take rate is certainly critical and how the competition will respond is critical. But I do want to note that we have, in addition to having a great history of success with our gas and electric and water utilities, and where electric in particular is way below PG&E, almost 50% below on base residential rate. And then we have, more recently, we've invested in a complete redo of the golf course. And we projected it was going to be a couple of years before it had positive cash flow. And it's doing very well and spending off a lot of money. We'll get an update again this year. Same thing with the airport. When we took it over, we projected that it would be a couple of years before it had positive cash flow. And that's happened and, and it's doing very well. Of course, those funds are restricted again, and so we can only plow those dollars back into those enterprises. But we do have a good history on very good success on, on these enterprises. I did want to bring up something that I recall from six years or so ago on a presentation on this, which at the time, the claim was, if I'm remembering correctly, and Jeff Hall will probably remember better than me, is that if there was one, two providers versus one, then the, the costs of service were about 10% lower. But if there were three providers, they dropped drastically. Is that no longer the case, Mr. Highworth? Because it sounded like you're saying that the response from those other providers is, is not typically today, a significant price drop.
I, I wouldn't say we've seen, you know, going from two providers to three providers, I wouldn't say that we've seen a drastic price, price drop in other communities. You know, five to 10% total across those three providers would be reasonable. More than that, we don't, we wouldn't, we haven't, we haven't encountered that in other.
Well, in that sense, like you said, it, it then reduces our fear of being undercut on pricing severely. And then I, I did want to address this issue of the impact of AT&amp;T expanding their penetration in our market by covering more geographic areas in the timeframe in which we're rolling this out. So if, do we have any idea of their expansion plans in Palo Alto? And if we looked at how that would affect our take rate if it's not the current level? And they're, they're clearly, they're clearly expanding. It's a question of how much and how soon. How will that affect our take rate and really our, our break-even point?
No, it could. If, if AT&amp;T plans to accelerate their deployment based on the fear that Palo Alto comes into the market, they're going to retrench and try to, you know, lock in as much of that market share as they can. That will make it somewhat more difficult for Palo Alto to go after that take rate, right? Because in those areas, we will have two competitors, two fiber competitors and a, and a cable option.
And how long have they been offering fiber? If they don't accelerate, just continue at their current rate of expanding service, do we know what that looks like?
You know, we, we, we don't know how long they've had market share out there. We, we did get some good information from the survey, but, you know, we would have, this is just a guess at this point, but over probably the past five, seven years, they've been increasing their densif, we call it densification of fiber across different parts of Palo Alto and have been jumping into the residential market. So, okay, we would, yeah, we would expect that. That's typically been the timeline for most of the big providers to be, to be increasing their infrastructure in, in communities where they're building fiber.
Thank you. Councilmember DuBois.
Yeah, I mean, this council and prior councils have had a series of meetings over the years. I think it's easy to lose track of kind of where we've been and, you know, what we've covered. So, so thank you tonight. I mean, we asked for a business plan, a financial model, engineering design. And I think it was over two years ago before some council members joined, that we accelerated the work and said, do the design for the backbone and the fiber to the home together. So tonight, you know, I'm glad it's a study session. There's a lot of past work, a lot of catch-up on new information. I, I've been trying to attend the UAC meetings and follow along. And so I just really have a series of comments. And, you know, we, we kind of started off tonight by saying, you know, why are we talking about fiber to the home? You know, our town already has two broadband providers. And for me, I think there's, there's multiple reasons. You know, we're talking about private companies and generally in the US, private broadband is both expensive and poor quality. We pay more for less than practically anywhere else in the world. According, according to Wall Street Journal, the US cable giants are making a 97% margin on their services. Real-world speeds aren't always what they're advertised to be. And we see performance that can be interfered with through data caps, pairing agreements. The biggest opponent to net neutrality is Comcast. And, and these days, a lot of surveys show that broadband is the number one priority for renters. And it also adds value to housing. And I went back and looked when we had the conversation in 2018. I think there are around 100, 108 cities that had uni-fiber. Now there's something like 560 communities in four years. So, you know, when we say like, why should we do this? I think it's better service, it's, it's symmetric upload and download speeds to really support, you know, working from home, increased use in the home. And it's more value for the dollar. And it's true that some people in town do have options, do have better service. For many people, fiber is still not available. And I, I really think we can benefit from marketing a local, city-owned service. You know, instead of shop local, it could be surf local. And I believe people will support our community. And I do think it's some key questions here about what all this excess cash flow could be used for. I think if we can fund our city services while enjoying great internet, that that by itself will be pretty compelling to a lot of people. You know, I wanted to talk about the survey a little bit. We get a lot of different surveys. To me, this was a much higher quality survey than the typical email, multiple-choice survey. So again, we, we sent it to our, our utility subscribers. We had a 15% response rate, so it was to a known universe of people. And beyond that, we haven't really talked about seven, over 700 people put down money. And that, to me, that's an extremely strong statement of interest. They were putting down money years ahead of time, really just around an idea. And then the use of conjoint analysis and doing trade-off questions really measures the degree of preference. And lets us do much more accurate predictions of things like market share and what's driving the buying decision. And, you know, if, I don't know if you guys saw the survey, but you were forced to repeatedly trade off brand, price, service levels. And so we're able mathematically to measure those things independently. So I, I would say that I hope we really look at the feedback we got from that survey. It's direct feedback. It's much more than our personal opinions and our personal experience with internet and Palo Alto. And there are a lot of people telling us that they would switch. And if we had this kind of response on our climate action plan, I think we'd all be very happy. On the financing side, you know, I think we all know, we have, we're not very levers as a city. We don't have a lot of debt. We have great bond ratings. We could fund a pretty quick build-out with a subscriber bond plus the money from our fiber fund, contribution from the electric utility. You know, saving $11 million by building both networks at once, to me, is pretty attractive. And, and also just reducing rates for everybody in Palo Alto, even those that are subscribing to other services, $15 million in savings to our residents is, is pretty compelling. And, you know, if you look at that slide 22, that cash flow just seems really compelling. $20 million in excess cash in 10 years. If we went with the outsourced model, we'd have $68 million in excess cash in 20 years, which includes paying down the bond, paying for maintenance and upgrades, interest. You know, we could use that money to pay down the bond early. Hopefully we could transfer some to the general fund or we could spend it on climate action plans or our grid upgrade. So just from a financial business opportunity, I feel like we should be focusing on de-risking the business plan, moving as fast as we can. And there are very few things that we do that provide these kinds of benefits to our residents and also generate this much revenue. And, and again, we talked about the future of the gas utility and the gas transfer. This seems like it could potentially just blow it out of the water at a time when perhaps the transfers may be decreasing. In terms of the business structure, I do think we need to think about how we have this nascent business and let it flourish. And John talked about some of the risk being, giving the right leaders, the right authority to be able to respond as a business. I think we should avoid fully loading a fiber utility with all of our government processes and all of our overhead, if there's a way we can do that. You know, I, it's probably a much longer discussion. For me, I would lean towards the outsourced model, like we would hire key managers internally, make them responsible for managing contractors and, you know, really get the benefit of trying to be competitive and move fast. The phasing discussion was interesting. You know, the map of the interests and the deposits are really spread citywide. So again, for me, I think we should think about how do we move as fast as we can to get as many subscribers as we can? And that probably means the overlapping on the aerial plant. And, you know, I think some speakers said that AT&amp;T fiber is not available where I live. We have overhead wires. And so hearing that 70% of the costs were in the underground districts also gave me pause and that, you know, about where do we start or where do we go? And I'd be interested in kind of that iteration of the business plan when it comes back. But for me, I think the, the goal would be to turn on subscribers as quickly as possible and start generating revenue to fund the rest of the build-out. On the competition, you know, I'm hearing a healthy concern from my colleagues. We will need to really execute on a business plan and a marketing plan. And again, I think the survey is a great start. But any other point I would make is that we've been running a successful fiber business for 20 years against a large group of competitors. A lot of these companies are the same companies we're talking about here. So, you know, we can do it. We've shown that we can do it. And then the last point I'd like to make is just around innovation and that doing something new is never easy. You know, if you think back to 1896, when Palo Altons were talking about starting a utility, our residents would have paid millions of dollars more than they have for water, electricity, gas. And going forward, I think we're looking at electric rates, they're nearly 50% of PG&E. We've shown that we can have, we have an award-winning, fiscally-strong utility. And even more recently, thinking about the council members in 1997, who voted to start the dark fiber ring, I'm sure they had no idea that they'd leave us with $34 million in the fiber fund today that, that makes this possible. So creating a, a new utility, it's, I think it's easy to say no, it's easy to kill it. Through a thousand cuts, it's really hard to say yes, but I'd urge us to be innovative. And I think about this as an opportunity. And, you know, tonight, we heard about some of the other cities that have done it. I'd urge, you know, council members, take a look at Longmont Colorado's municipal fiber website. It has the history, it shows the pricing, it shows a range of options. It also shows how they're marketing their service. So if we make the decision to move forward when this comes back to us as an action item, I, I really hope we could focus on things we could do to accelerate this. For me, I think the highest risk would be a really slow rollout that would get bogged down. And, you know, something like the self-financing plan over 15 years, I think that would, that would be death. I mean, talking about the competition, having time to respond. So I'll just leave you with a thought and it would be, what would life be if we had no courage to attempt anything? Thank you.
Vice Mayor Koo.
So councilmember DuBois, thank you for the background and refreshing us on what, what we had discussed prior. I just have one question, just to clarify, the city's fiber enterprise fund, it's not restricted to just the dark fiber, right?
That is correct.
So it can be used for FTP and the bill. Okay, thank you so much.
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yeah, so since we're starting to comment here, I think, I think we all see the attraction here, right? None of us wants to be terribly dependent on cable TV company service. And the notion of architectural advantages, if we start from scratch, is an intriguing one. You know, the cash flow, of course, it looks great, but is, you know, it's a high fixed cost business, right? So if you, if you got the market share, it spins off cash. Okay, okay. Questions, can you get the market share, right? So I think, you know, I worry, and I think all of us have focused on this about the take rate and the concern that, you know, thirty percent may be harder than we think to get to in this particular environment that we're in today. So basically, as short as, I believe we can build it, the question is, can we sell it, right? The, the, the survey data also raises some concerns, right? You know, half the people are cord cutters, but the other half want TV. Okay, so they're gone, at least for the moment, okay? So in order to get to thirty percent take rate, then we need sixty percent market share of the remaining half, right? Which is, you know. What's our value proposition? Survey shows that people's top priorities are one, cost, two, speed, three, reliability and service. We haven't shown that we can differentiate on the first two priorities, okay? We're talking about the third one, which is interesting, right? But, you know, that one's sort of hard to prove to people and demonstrate and so forth too, especially if we're not first to market, okay? So, you know, and it'll work well if the competition is really asleep, right? But if we have to displace an incumbent because we didn't get there fast enough, then, then it gets more complicated. Your data contains the caveat that, well, the competition might fight back, okay? With, you know, faster speeds, lower costs and so forth. I think we should assume some of that. And it's not just Comcast and AT&amp;T, right? I think we need to keep an eye on the startups too, right? There are some. So I bring up Atherton Fiber because supposedly they have five hundred million dollars and one of my friends in Menlo Park has had them for a year and loves it, okay? Okay, this is what we call mother-in-law research, okay? But anyway, they claim, they claim a gigabit for sixty-five dollars a month and ten gigs for three hundred dollars a month, which is already lower than, than our data estimates show. So if there's price erosion, that'll impact our financials. And it's not unheard of for city capital projects to actually cost more than their original estimates were, were, okay? So I think the go-to-market plan here is really important. I mean, we really need to, if we're gonna entertain going this direction, like it, it, it's gotta be right. And so we gotta look in and go, are there places in town where we're not gonna have to go head-to-head against AT&amp;T or, or somebody else and so forth? I mean, Atherton Fiber is not in Palo Alto yet, okay? So maybe they won't be for a while, maybe they will, right? Or somebody else. Are there places where structurally, we're not gonna have to go head-to-head against them for a while so we can build our business there, right? Because the risk is that this ends up as kind of an infinite subsidy kind of thing. If we don't hit our take rates, then, in other words, if the revenue doesn't actually cover the revenue bond. I mean, the financials here, it's already a decade to get the cash flow positive, okay? So I think the whole risk is the take rate. And this is the first utility we're talking about, we're actually gonna head-to-head against private sector competition, which we don't have in any of our other utilities. So I think the go-to-market plan is gonna be really important. And I think if and when this comes back to council, I think, you know, that, that needs to, that, that, that's probably gonna be pivotal. Thanks.
I have a, a couple of follow-up questions. First, in the projections, did we incorporate over the next, what's our, our build-out timeframe is what, again?
So we're looking at about five years.
And so if we're spinning off two to two and a half million from the dark fiber fund, is that built into the cash flow?
It is, yes.
Okay.
The, the net cash flows from the existing fiber business are built into the, the numbers here.
Okay. And then I wanted to dive into the, the backbone expansion, aside from the fiber to the premise. So we've talked about the criticality to our, particularly our electric utility with our advanced metering infrastructure. But we need to do that pretty soon. And if we're talking about a five-year build-out, what would we be doing to meet that need as we're rolling out the AMIs in the next year or two?
So Mayor Burt, right now, we have used the existing backbone and kind of made some very long drops off because there's actually four collectors throughout the city. And there's gonna be a fifth that will be added up in the foothills. But right now, we are actually getting back calling some water and some gas meters through that AMI system using the existing fiber backbone that we have. But again, it has quite a long extensions in some of those areas.
So over the next five years, while, if, while we would be rolling this out, how, how well would we be able to meet our need to accommodate a full rollout of AMI before we have a full rollout of this system?
That's a good question. I mean, we can prioritize, we can prioritize the AMI so that the rollout, the AMI, the fiber that's needed for AMI could be prioritized with the roll, the fiber to the premise rollout. So it happens, you know, before or coincident with those areas. So for example, if you're building a neighborhood and we need an AMI collector in that neighborhood, well, we need to build the fiber to hit that AMI collector, so let's also build to that neighborhood at the same time.
Okay.
So definitely some scheduling and some prioritization.
And then as we build out this backbone, do we create other opportunities to expand our, our business and our, our earnings from the dark fiber? And so to what extent do we think on that, on the, on the business side, we might be able to expand this even before we've gone into, by, by just building out the, the backbone, how much would we potentially increase our, our revenue and our profits from the existing fiber network?
There, there's an opportunity for that. We didn't quantify how much would be, because dark fiber is very hard to forecast, right? Because there's a smaller number of customers, it's not a commodity service like broadband. But there would definitely be opportunity for more dark fiber sales with more fiber capacity and the new, and the new backbone.
And I, you know, I haven't looked recently at kind of the, the map of our, of our fiber loop. And, and we didn't have a map of, of how we would roll out this backbone. But it, it made me wonder how many more businesses we would be able to serve and customers that we'd attract as we just do the backbone rollout. Is it, do we have a sense of that or we haven't really mapped that out yet?
We, we do, we have, we can get some numbers on how many more businesses would have access. Because we are passing with the new fiber backbone, we're going through areas that didn't have fiber before. And those businesses would all be fair game for new service. So we can, we can put that on the, on the agenda to, to, to kind of quantify.
Good. And lastly, I was thinking about, you know, this question of the value of the reliability. And I was realizing that when Councilmember Tanaka was talking about, he, for example, is buying both services. That sounds to me like that's, that's a premium that he and others, I don't know how many others, are already being willing to pay to increase the reliability. If one goes down, they have a second one. And that's, that's a premium for reliability, that's a pretty high premium to increase your reliability. But I'm, I would imagine that there are others who are very reliant on their, on their broadband service for their businesses and whatnot, who are already doing that. I don't know if we have any way to capture that and have that help inform the value of that reliability premium, but it's, it's certainly something to be thinking about that it's in, on people's minds, even if they haven't called it that.
Right. And well, and I think we can support that in, you know, the, the, the cost of the service, if the premium for the reliability doesn't create a cost in service for the customer, meaning if the rates are the same, and that's true, then that should, that should drive take rates.
Yeah, I mean, they're not gonna pay what they pay for two services, but they'll still, it'll still be a factor. Okay, Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor Burt. All right. I, I think the question that hasn't been asked yet is, what is the problem we're trying to solve? And I've heard really different versions from some colleagues. And we have, you know, super detailed information here, but I think it behooves us to figure that out and write it down. And is it that it's too expensive? Is it that we don't like the service? Is it that it's not reliable enough? Is it that not enough people have access? And every time we say all of these things matter, we end up with a program that probably won't meet the objectives. So I feel really strongly that we do not have a value proposition that's written out in a way that is gonna make people comfortable, making a, you know, multimillion-dollar decision. And that's easy to explain to people. So I'm still waiting for that and I'm not quite sure whose responsibility it is. But I don't think we have a crisp description of that. And, and I guess one of the ways I've been thinking about this decision is, like others at councils, our council has had to make, it's really a decision for the long run, right? It's, it's Councilmember DeBois is right, it's always easy to say no, this isn't the right time. There's a lot of reasons this isn't the right time. So one way I'm, I, one lens I have been using is, do we think that in five years or ten years, pick your number, could be fifteen, Palo Alto should have fiber everywhere? And if we think that that should happen, do we believe it should be operated by the government? Or do we believe that, you know, businesses are better, better equipped to do that for whatever reason? So for me, that's the fundamental question that will get us past a lot of the details, super helpful to have them, they're very important. We could all spend, you know, a whole nother day going through them with you. But fundamentally, do we believe that everyone in Palo Alto should have fiber in the near future? And to the extent that we cannot answer Mr. Hitching's question, how many people will have AT&amp;T fiber in three years? Then maybe we need to take the responsibility on ourselves. If we knew that, you know, one of the existing competitors was going to provide, you know, that, you know, reliable fiber most of the places, I'm not sure we would take the risk. So those are, those are the questions that I'll be thinking about there. One of the big questions, and Director Bachelor, this is for you, and it's probably also for the city manager's office. It was another public comment, it's been implicit a lot of the discussion. If we do this, will this work in any way displace the really crucial work of getting gas out of our city?
I'd have to say no, it's, it has no.
You're not gonna spend any time on this?
Well, the thing is, is that from what we've looked at so far, is all the engineering has been done. Hundred percent of, well, ninety-two percent of this system has already been looked at. The sharing of some of the resources that we talked about, like from an engineering perspective, there's not gonna be no shared resources between fiber and gas. So I'd have to say no, there's.
Okay, you feel like the projects are independent, it's not overloading staff?
No, it, like I said, especially on the water, gas, wastewater side, it would not.
Yeah, I'm not as worried about that side.
Yeah, the only, only time that if we were making, to make some final decisions to look at making some joint trench with maybe a gas or a water project, maybe from some new design portion of that. But other than that, short of that, I'd have to say no.
Okay. And then it sounded like Councilmember Phil Seth was headed down some version of what I'll call the doomsday scenario. So, you know, I just think, not, not that I, I, you know, I like to imagine everything that could go wrong, that's not my usual style. And we are losing money, you know, year over year. What are the options? Can we sell the infrastructure to competitors that? I just, we just need to know what the exit strategy is if this doesn't go well.
So, so typically, there's.
It's fine, go ahead.
Typically, you would, you know, let's say the take rate, we hit the doomsday scenario and the take rates aren't where they are expected to be, right? You're gonna go through a period of reevaluation to determine what the next step is. And that would, the first logical step would be find a partner who's willing to operate the system for you. Come in, you know, and, and that's not a, not, it's not putting Palo Alto in a powerful position, right?
I get it.
The providers know and they're going to negotiate the best deal that they can, but it still protects the city's financial investment in the system. So that typically looks like, you know, a, a private sector partner taking over operation of the system, being the front face and then covering the city's debt service. Right now, not directly as a third party, but effectively paying a fee to the city so it can cover its debt service for the, for the long-term obligation of that, that, that debt. You know, if that's not available, then potentially, you know, selling the system to a third party as, as a, you know, an asset sale, which we have rarely seen, I think, in maybe two cases we've seen that. But that would not be a good position for the city to be in either, right? We're talking about a fire sale of the assets at that point. Although they still have significant value, the city will not be in a good bargaining position if, if that were to happen.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember DeBois, oh, oh, Stone, rather.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this conversation's been really helpful as a new council member to this issue, really came in tonight. And I have a strong preference either way, and unfortunately, good arguments are being made on, on both sides. And so it is definitely making it more, more difficult. I, I, I do believe that the, that you made a compelling case for the, for the take rate. I, I think these are services that would benefit the community and depending on as well what we can do with possible, possible transfers in the future, this is a, really opens up a lot of interesting opportunities for the city as far as future investments, not only into this program to improve it, but also into, into other areas. But of course, the law is developing there, so not, yeah, maybe not too helpful at this, at this moment. There, there are some concerns that I have that I think is shared with, with some of my colleagues. I, I do question, are we veering out of our lane and kind of taking on responsibilities and strategies that the city is just not experienced in? I mean, some of the various strategies that are outlined to counteract potential risks were recruiting and training influencers to promote the city's message, marketing to compete with international companies, greatly expanding, really, and really just kind of greatly expanding our, our city's bureaucracy in order to maintain that competitive edge through some stronger customer service. Now, do I think Palo Alto can offer a better service and better customer service? Absolutely, I, I think we, we can. But I'm, I'm also kind of curious, man, yeah, I have Comcast, I, I don't love it, but I also don't know how, how difficult it is to, to make the switch. And, and, and would even saving ten, twenty dollars a month really be worth it for me picking up that phone and, and doing that? I, I don't know, and I don't know how others will react to that, and this is a, this is a big bet on that. I think arguments were made strongly in favor of that we have done this very well with other utilities. But I also agree with Councilmember Phil Seth, those have been without competing with other international companies that do this work day in and day out and, and, and make very sizable profits on it. I'm gonna become very, very defensive when we, when we encroach on their, on their turf. Yeah, the stat report stated that if Palo Alto becomes the third major ISP in the market, that it will be unlikely that other ISPs will enter the market in the future. And I think that's a, that's a good thing if we're providing a superior service. But of course, less competition will lead to less innovation, fewer incentives to differentiate. And, and so I'm, so part of me also kind of wonders, and I think this goes to Councilmember Cormac's point, and what, what is government's role here? And are we better just simply staying out of the market? By doing that, can we actually have a, a better situation with providing more private actors to be able to compete for that, for that market share? I, I just don't, I just don't know. I I just don't, I just don't know. One thing that continues to worry me is the, the risk of I view the risk to connection for tenants and multi-using housing to be a, a big flaw here. Staff report identified that. I know there were some, some risk mitigators that were identified. I'd like to see that further developed. I, I don't think it's sufficient to just say it's, that we might not be able to reach those growing number of households. So I'd like to see a plan that that builds that in on the, whether we in-house it or out, outsource it. I didn't, for me, I think Councilmember DuBois, DuBois made a good point on the outsourcing. But for me, I think in-house would be my preference. I think one of the great advantages to operating our own service here would be having control over our operations and being able to deliver the quality of service that residents have really come to expect from the city of Palo Alto. I think that is what's going to get people talking to their neighbors and their friends within the community and convincing them to switch over in order to enjoy that, that service. So if we're outsourcing these operations, I think we really lose that advantage. And at that point, I'm just really not sure why we wouldn't want to just leave it to the private market to address. But that being said, I mean, my preference for in-house, I mean, the city is also struggling right now with across the board in recruitment and retention in, in all other areas. And so we are going to be creating a whole new base of, of employees, a whole new employee group, and the, the ongoing struggles that we will, that we will see with that. I think there are some interesting issues of, of equity that I think this can, that this can help address within the community. That greater connection will, will benefit everybody. So I think that's where, where I'm at. I, I see the pros and the cons, and I'm, I'm glad this is just a study session today. So I'm looking forward to getting some more information back from staff and continuing this, this conversation. But I'm glad we are continuing it, I think it's a worthy exercise.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, so I've been listening to the conversation, and I have to agree with what my fellow councilmembers said in terms of, I think some of the ones cited, you know, like the golf course or our power or water. It's not a fair comparison because those are monopolies. We, we have, we don't have real competition, and people don't have a choice. So I don't think that's a, that's probably a good thing. And also, I don't think we can build a business on charity where people will have their, have a patriotic, patriotic duty to Palo Alto to use our service. I don't think that's a good way to build a business. I think, you know, maybe people will do that, but I don't think we can rely on that. So I don't think we should do that either. And, you know, I've also heard arguments about, well, gee, for our utilities, we, we have such better rates than PG&E, but like I said many times, you know, we're basically renting the service from PG&E versus owning it ourselves. We sunk in a lot of capital, so you just can't look at the rates, and so you have to look at how much capital went in and what are people paying in order to have a fair comparison. So, you know, more I think about this, more I think that, and, and I, I've been a huge fan of fiber to the premises. I, I think we should have done a long time ago. And I think there's a lot of benefit to getting much, much faster internet. But the product, the service proposed here is just in my mind, really not compelling. It's, it's, it's like, and I think it'll be even less compelling in three years or four years or five years, or whenever this comes out. And, you know, if we can do something, we have to do something much better than this, maybe like 10 gigabit or something, just some target much better than what, what this is. And I agree on the comment about reliability. I, I don't know anyone else that does what I do, and I, I, you know, keep telling my wife she counts one, but she's so freaked out by the internet going out that we have both. But I don't think there's too many people that do that. So, so I think reliable is a hard sell, even though myself, we, we pay a premium because of that. So I, I think what we should do, it's all this effort and money that we're thinking about spending. What we, what we should do is, you know, trying to encourage like the action startup to come over here and, and provide service, and maybe try to provide incentives for AT&amp;T to roll out to a certain target. Or for there to be some sort of reliability uptime from these guys, and they get some sort of bonus or some sort of, some sort of a benefit from the city. I think that's probably a better thing, where we spur the competition, where we encourage a competition, make it easier to do business here, easier to roll out here. I think we might get a bigger, a bigger return on investment, there's a lot less risk. We don't think, we probably don't need to hire four people or 25 people and worry about all the pensions and all that stuff. And I, I, you know, I, you know, I, every Sunday I have office hours, I have a bunch of people, a lot of my, a lot of, a lot of my office hours, people complain about our customer service as a city. They complain about our permitting, that's every week, someone complains about permitting and how bad it is. And they complain about, you know, utilities and just, you know, there's just all this kind of customer service issues. So I don't think we, as a city, are really great at customer service. It's hard, you know, it's, it's not easy providing great customer service. And so I don't think the city excels at that. And a lot of what being an ISP is, is like, oh, my, my, my Wi-Fi went out and this and that. And I don't, I don't think we're great at that. I mean, we don't, are we gonna open a call center in India? I mean, I don't know, I mean, this seems like, I, I think one of the customers said it well, which is maybe we're swimming out of our lane a bit. I, I think it's, I think we have nutter just doing what we're doing right now. And, you know, I, I've, I've had people also, you know, that people complain incessantly about the power outages. I think we had like nineteen power outages or something like that this year. And, and so people are like, I don't know if we have the brand of being super reliable. Maybe we do, and, you know, nineteen is not bad compared to other cities, but to some people here, it seems like a lot. And so I think, I think we should really, at this point in time, either come up with a super compelling, you know, much better, much cheaper service offering that we think we could do. Or we should, we should go back to Plan B, which is, or go to Plan B, which is really encouraging massive competition in our city to provide better service and reliability. And that is encouraged, given, giving incentives to people. It may be access to dark fiber or, or money, or whatever it takes to get people to compete in our city. And I think that's, I think that's going to yield better results than, than this, but this seems like, it doesn't seem like a super compelling business case right now. And I wish it was, because I, I'm actually a pretty big, pretty big fan of this. And I, I want this to happen, but it, it just doesn't seem to pencil out. And maybe if I didn't have access to give it, if in there right now at my house, I might be like, you know, kind of thinking differently, but I think I do, and a lot of people do now. And so we've, we've kind of missed the market window, so to speak, at least in my mind. So anyways, that's my thoughts, thank you.
Vice Mayor Koo.
Thank you. When, when you return, I was wondering if you might be able to include some municipalities that has fiber and some model of what they, they offer on the take rates and how they implemented it, what challenges they ran into. So some of those modeling, just so that we can kind of compare and consider with the city here.
Should definitely be able to do that.
Thank you.
Councilmember DuBois.
Yeah, so listening to Councilmember Tanaka, I just thought, so you were talking about a build out over five years. We really haven't talked about the packages that we'd offer people in terms of making it a compelling service. Looks like from the survey, there were some people that would like a lower price, you know, slower speed service, potentially a one gigabit service. I mean, over those five years, would be offer, would you recommend offering a 10 gigabit service? And since we're building this network, would build the network from scratch, what would be our ability to offer like really compelling services?
Yeah, no, that's a great question, Commissioner DuBois. We, we really look at the, the, the speeds and prices that are presented here are, again, from the survey, right? So those look at what the current market has to offer and what Palo Alto offering, how it would be treated in the market by the consumer, right? It doesn't mean that's, those are the products and services that we're actually offering. And in all, in all reality, when the network is built, right? That will be a year down the road at least. So prices, speeds, packages are going to be considerably different at that point. And again, in building the network from scratch gives you the ability to, you know, offer as much speed as you want. And offer, because we have, from looking at the free cash flow graphs, we have excess cash flow in the system, which would allow you to potentially lower rates as well. So, you know, use those numbers that are in the, in the pricing slide, in the, in the take rate slide as a, as a snapshot in time, as a baseline. You can offer much more than that based on what the network's capabilities will have. So to answer your question, sort of in a, in a brief way, yes, you'd be able to offer, you know, two gig, five gig, 10 gigabit services from day one if that's what the community decided was most important.
Yeah, so it's really a dynamic business, I guess. We just gotta be ready over time to, to keep upgrading and offering different things, sounds right.
Right.
Well, I'd just like, oh, go ahead, Councilmember Phil Seth.
I just want to make sure I understand what you, what you just said. So are you saying that, you know, we could make money with two and a half gigs at forty bucks a month?
No, there's gonna be limits to that. But the cost of increasing your speeds on the network are marginal, very, very, very small. So you could increase from, you know, one gigabit to two gigabit for a very, very small marginal cost.
Right.
But a much higher marginal revenue. So the goal would be, you know, provide as much speed as you can within the limits of the network at the lowest cost possible.
So does this turn into a thing of, you know, we need to get at least X from every customer? But whether we give them, whether we offer one gig or two gig or five gigs makes much less difference?
Right.
Need to get.
You, you have a fixed cost for.
Is there any reason that our fixed cost per resident could be significantly lower than competitors because we're starting from scratch?
Yeah, to some degree it could.
So.
The, the question becomes how much cushion do you want to leave in there for potential price reductions, right? So we can, we can, we can back down those prices, which is going to reduce free cash flow in the later years. But you want to leave some cushion in there, right? We don't want to sell for too low. And then, you know, not have any flexibility, because we can only go up and down, we can't go back up. That's where we get in trouble.
Okay.
So it's, again, this is the business, right? The business risk is, we want to set pricing competitively, right, at that sweet spot where we're achieving the take rates slightly lower than competition. But we're not going so low that we set ourselves up for, you know, all the other business issues that could happen, right? We may need that cash for higher costs, higher overheads, right? So it's a delicate balance in our price setting.
You, you may need, you may need that aggressive pricing, you know, to, to get the customers on board.
Agreed, agreed.
So, well, okay, so I think, you know, again, this is, this is, this is what I think, you know, one of the really key linchpins of us considering this is, you know, we need five, we need, I mean, according to your spreadsheet, right? I mean, we need nine thousand customers, okay? So who are the first 10? Who are the first hundred? Who are the first thousand? Why are they gonna buy it? What's the customer acquisition cost? What are they gonna pay? Why are they gonna pick us instead of AT&amp;T and, and other folks and so forth? That, we, we need a clear understanding of that. And, and the number that you just said, which is, how far can we lower price and not go broke, right? We need to know that too.
Yep, you, you always want to know your fixed cost per customer. Like, what's the minimum fixed cost we can get to pay back the debt service and cover costs?
Yes, we do.
Right.
Councilmember Tanaka, did you have something else?
I did, actually. So I just wanted to follow on what Councilmember Phil Seth just said, which is, I, I think all the things he just said we need to have in order to figure out this business case. But I, I've, I've been involved with a lot of startups. And, you know, one of the fundamental errors a lot of startups make is we look at the current product and we say, well, heck, you know, we're gonna start from scratch, we don't have all this legacy you have to deal with. And we're going to be able to build a way better product. But the, the issue that a lot of startups have is the, what's in the market right now keeps also progressing forward. And, and so, and so I, I worry about that, right? I really worry that we're gonna be chasing something that's gonna be hard for us to beat. And also, a lot of this, what's, what's in this internet service is, is also branding, right? It's also the service people, there's all stuff, so I, I've been thinking about, like, what is our city's competitive advantage here? Like, what, what advantage, what can we do in a more superior way than anything else? And I don't think it's customer service, right? Maybe there's something else, it's, it's not customer service. It's a speed, I don't know. But maybe one thing that you guys could think about, that we might have a, a real competitive advantage in, is latency. For some people, latency is actually a big deal, right? So, you know, maybe because we have the short circuit to the dark fiber, or we don't do, I don't know. Maybe there's a way where, where we could have a real competitive advantage. Because the truth is, if I had 10 gigabit ethernet right now, what would I do with that? I don't know, right? I, maybe in the future, we'll be all in the metaverse and not really need it, I don't know. But, but latency is something that which a lot of people could use right now, whether it's Zoom calls or whatever. You could actually, we have low latency, actually can feel it. So anyways, I just, I think we have to figure out what is our competitive advantage? And if it's too nebulous, if it's too hard for us to get a clearer win here, I don't think we should do this, because it's, there's too much risk here. I, I don't see, it's, it's, we can't, like, wait for the stars and moon to align for this to work out. It's gotta make logical sense, and I, right now, this, I just don't see it.
I, I just wanted to summarize some of the key questions that I still am hoping to get additional information on. So we say that we're, we're real far along on the, the whole engineering design, but this big nut of how much micro trenching is going to affect our construction costs seems very significant. And I appreciate that kind of the next return to us, you may not have a precise number, but we need something that gives us a better sense of that. Because, you know, if we cut a lot of dollars out.
Yeah, sure.
That's gonna change the ballgame. And then to a lesser extent, this potential of combining the fiber laying with any other utilities that we'd be putting down rather than vice versa, as Dean said. I'd also want to see if we can estimate additional revenue opportunities from the backbone expansion.
From the dark fiber?
Yeah.
Sure.
Which once again throws money into subsidizing the fiber to the premise. And then to what extent we can have a better understanding on the general fund transfers? If we're going to assume risk from the general fund, but we don't get benefit in terms of return to it, then that's an imbalanced equation. We still may want to do it, but it's something we really need to understand better than we do now, even with appreciating that it's a fluid situation somewhat. And then lastly, to see some real projections of the impact of AT&amp;T's expansion at their current rate, based on, say, five years from now, when we're fully rolled out, what's, what, how competitive are they to us at that time versus if we were rolled out today on their current takeup? And if they chose to accelerate their, their rollout in response to us, how would that affect us? So those were my big things. So, Councilmember DuBois, I see you have something else.
Just while you're doing questions, I think one thing we didn't talk about either was, would we offer fiber service to businesses? So is that in, is that in the business plan anywhere?
I'm sorry, Councilmember, could you repeat the question?
Offering fiber service to businesses.
Yeah, yep, that would be, I, I would, I think, I think that's what Mayor Burt was mentioning as well, projecting the revenues from.
Not, not just dark fiber, but a lit fiber service to businesses.
Lit fiber, transport services, you know, anything that the business community needs in terms of telecommunications would be fair game.
Yep, okay.
I think we've milked that one dry. So thank you very much. It's been a very informative discussion, even if we don't have all of our questions answered. I, I think this has been productive. And when, when do we have any sense of what, what our next steps would be in returning to council with some significant portion of our questions there? And whether that would be an action item evening or another study session leading to an action item?
So thank you very much for all the input tonight, Councilmembers. So right now, we're planning on coming back the Monday after Thanksgiving, which I believe is the 26th, back to council. The idea, excuse me, the idea was to come back as an action item to you. We will take back everything that we learned tonight, and we'll, we'll put together a, a new report updating all your questions and your concerns in that. And like I said, we were planning on bringing it back as an action item.
Thank you. Thank you, and that concludes our regular business tonight. Our remaining item is Councilmember Questions, Comments, and Announcements. Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor Burt. We had a Bosque meeting last week, so just want to give you the update on water supply. The SFPUC's total system storage is at sixty-seven percent of capacity, usually.
The SFPUC's total system storage is at 67% of capacity, usually 83. Water bank is at 44% of capacity, usually 97. Good news is, is that system deliveries have been down July through September, below 2019 and 2020, but they're not as low as 2015. And the SFPUC is in having conversations with the state regarding the Bay Delta Plan. And then if the clerk could please pop up those two slides I sent. I know we're all connecting up with different departments, so I just wanted to show you, show you what I did on Friday and Saturday. It's just photos. Won't take that long. So my assignments are Fire Department and Community Services Department. And on Friday, I got to spend most of the day up at foothills observing our recruits and others working to learn how to fight fires in the wildland area. So there was a lot of in-person training on the right. And then I did not touch the chainsaw, but they were all learning how to use that. It was great to see our park rangers represented there. And next slide, please. And then on Saturday, I spent some time at the Art Center and I got to make a clay pumpkin with first graders. It was just my speed. And then also went to the art exhibit, which the city manager referenced earlier. So thanks so much to the city clerk.
All right, and that concludes our meeting. Thank you.